Good evening. I am going to call to order the June 6, 2024 Board of Education Meeting. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash Changva Fernandinho Tatavaim and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. If he feels so inclined, I'd love to invite up the fearless leader of our adult school, Juan Noguera, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you're able, please rise. Thank you so much. Ms. Quintero, please take the roll call at this time.
Member Ferguson. Member Ferguson is absent today. Member Tabit. Clerk Ponser Kamkar.
Present.
Vice President Aga Khanian.
Present.
President Weisberg.
Present. Reporting on closed session, I don't have anything to report out. Adjustments to the agenda. I do know that we are going to pull item 13E and 13H. Is there anything else that anyone wants to pull? Okay. Items for future agendas. I got something. I would love to get a report back on two pieces of upcoming legislation. So AB 2901, which is a really fantastic bill that's going to provide 14 weeks of paid maternity leave. I want to better understand what the fiscal impact of that might be. I also want us to check out AB 2316, which is Assemblymember Gabriel's bill that's going to ask or mandate that school districts remove certain items that contain, and I'll send this to, specific chemicals. I want to make sure that we don't have food that contains those chemicals. I don't think that we do. And if we do, how much it would cost us to replace those items?
What's the urgency of this request, Dr. Weisberg?
What a wonderful question you ask, my friend. I would say before we go back to school, just because it's going to have some impact on budget discussions moving forward.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Vice, sorry, Vice President Aga Khanian.
Thank you. Also, if we can get an update on two conversations, discussions we had before. One was having an area designated for our students' representatives from the past to have their names on the plaques.
That already exists. It's right in front of the district board.
We've already added, oh yeah, I forgot about it. Sorry. Long day. And then the second one was also, this is not just when the new year starts, about acknowledging our past donors, you know, with, starting with certificates, inviting them. I mean, I would want to do it maybe after summer, if we can.
If I'm not wrong, when this was brought up last time, I believe that Ms. Ponser Kamkar highlighted, or maybe it was Board Member Tabit, that we can, as individual board members, at any time, request certificates to acknowledge donors. And so I think we have to differentiate between which things we want to do, and if there's a larger donor that we want to have a more formal recognition of.
Yes.
Is it okay if I work with you offline and we figure that out? Peace out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, friends. We're going to move on to eight presentations and recognitions. I'm going to introduce Dr. Macias, who will facilitate the recognition of Frank Hernandez.
Good evening, Board President Weisberg, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Promar, Superintendent District Staff, our Burbank community. I am very proud here to share an accomplishment of one of our recent graduates at John Burroughs High School, Mr. Frank Hernandez. Want to start off also, he was a former Yellow Jacket when I was the Principal Luther Burbank Middle School. So especially happy to share this experience here. So Frank just recently graduated from John Burroughs High School. He has achieved the remarkable feat of being accepted into the U.S. Military Academy at West Point, the U.S. Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs, and the U.S. Naval Academy at Annapolis. This exceptional let me explain how special this is. This exceptional accomplishment is a testament to his academic excellence, leadership skills, moral character, and unwavering commitment to service. Securing appointments to these prestigious institutions involves a highly competitive and rigorous selection process, including obtaining a nomination from a congressional representative, in this case, U.S. Representative Adam Schiff. I think I'm not incorrect. Frank, you accepted your appointment to the U.S. Air Force Academy, correct? He's wearing a sweatshirt. So I want to take a moment to congratulate Frank on behalf of the entire district. Frank, come on up, please. We have a certificate for you.
Does anybody? I think we're all going to cheer you on.
Yeah, because Frank, you know, this is Burbank, and I happen to be friends with your mom and saw your mom's Facebook post. And I'm reading, I'm like, oh, that's really cool. You know, he's going to go into the Air Force Academy. And then I kept reading. And I've been around Burbank a long time. And I know lots of young folks that have gone into military academies, but I don't know one. And I graduated high school 40 years ago. I don't know one who got into three. And that, I may be wrong, and someone in the community will point it out, I'm sure. But I personally don't know anyone who got into three. And I think that is an amazing accomplishment. And it was something that I don't think this board needed to let just go off into the sunset. We need to recognize you and say how proud we were of you, and that we hope you have an amazing career and lifetime, and that your hard work and dedication to what you wanted to achieve has worked out for you. And so, super proud, super impressed, and good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Tabit came back from the senior awards night at John Burrows and told us all about your amazing accomplishments. And we said, let's bring him to the board meeting so we can all meet you. So here you are. It is truly an unbelievable accomplishment. And I was telling someone today how, like, one of the most unexpected best parts of this job is getting to be like, just a teeny little tiny part of this kind of success. I hope you will come back to Burrows in the future and, you know, help other kids kind of figure this out and, you know, make the same kind of choices that you did. It's really an amazing accomplishment. I know how hard that must have been, and you've done a ton of work to get to this point. So we really look forward to seeing everything you accomplish in the future. So make sure you come back and tell us, okay?
I think my colleagues have said most of it. As someone who is best friend is a retired captain who served in many, you know, different theaters and in different countries. I understand the dedication, but I think also the sacrifice you're going to have to make. But I also want to thank your family for the sacrifices they've made for you to be where you are today. Without them, this wouldn't have happened. So I'm certain they're very proud of you. One thing I will ask you, this is what breaks my, sometimes my heart and my best friend's mother's heart, is that he doesn't visit them as much as he used to. So don't forget about your family. Don't forget about Burbank. We'd love to hear about, you know, your endeavors and your success stories, and we look forward to hearing and seeing you soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll make this quick so you don't have to stand up here anymore. But just a huge congratulations. We're all so, so proud of you. And what you're doing is not only commendable, but it is a huge sacrifice. To go and serve your country is something not to be taken lightly. And as I'm sure somebody will bring up shortly, you probably saw that I didn't stand for the pledge. And it's not because I don't love and respect our country and the people who serve it, but because I hold our country to such a high standard. So seeing somebody like you who's up here who's saying, I'm dedicating myself to not only the defense of the United States, but our democratic ideals and beliefs, is really inspiring. So many people don't choose to do it. And so just having you up here is exciting. It fills me with like so much, I mean, I don't know you yet, right? But so much pride and joy and enthusiasm. And I hope you'll come back and let us know how it is. And to your family, thank you so much for being here. And we're just, we're so excited and so proud. And it's a wonderful testament, not just to Burbank Unified, but to you. So congratulations, my friend, and good luck in the Naval Academy. Air Force, Air Force. Do you play, wait, what's the big football rivalry?
Army-Navy.
Army-Navy. So we won't talk about football. Good luck in the Air Force, my friend.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So it's the best part of our job. I'm now going to call up Dr. Knappick, who is going to facilitate the Administrator of the Year recognition.
Good evening, Board President Dr. Weisberg, Vice President Dr. Aga Khanian, Board members. It is with great humility and appreciation this evening that I share with you our nominees for our Burbank Unified School District Administrator of the Year. Our nominees are Greg Miller, our principal at Muir Middle School, Dennis Maxwell, our facilities director, Adriana Lutrevales, our special education coordinator, Wayne Theback, just by coincidence, Narne Barzagar, principal, Burbank High School, Michelle Tobias, school psychologist. It is further with great honor that I introduce to you this evening our Burbank Unified School District Administrator of the Year, our very own April Weaver, principal at Monterey High School. April?
Hello. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Promo and Dr. Weisberg, and all the school board members and district staff and the community. Being nominated as Administrator of the Year is such an honor, especially because I have so much respect for all of the other people who've been nominated, all my fellow principals and administrators, like, everybody's so amazing and wonderful that I can't believe I actually won compared like with all these people that it could have been. It's kind of amazing that I'm even standing here, because when I moved to LA in the summer of 2022, I didn't have a job. And I sat down and I applied everywhere, like everywhere, every public school, every private school, every program, everywhere. And I waited and waited for a phone call and never got one. And I think it's because I was 24 and had an emergency credential and no experience. So I didn't get a call. But then all of a sudden, I got a call, and it was from Connie. And this was in the summer, going into the school year. And she said, why don't you come in and meet with the special ed director? And I said, great, let's go on it. So I went in and I met the special ed director. I interviewed a bunch of places and landed at Luther Burbank Middle School. And I was thrilled, because I have ties to Burbank. My great grandparents moved here during the Great Depression, and this is where my family settled. I didn't grow up here, though, but I have lots of fond memories of Burbank. And so I was really excited to start working in Burbank. So, let me find my place. So in my time here in Burbank, I've created multiple programs. I sat in countless student meetings, chaperone dances, planned field trips, wiped tables, put Band-Aids on cuts, and I've celebrated all the milestones. And all of this, I've met amazing educators, and some of these people are the best friends I've ever had, and I will have for the rest of my life. And that's why this award means so much to me. So before I end, I just want to thank my grandparents, who are no longer with us, and for my husband, who always tells me to try new things, and for my son, who is my admin sidekick. So, so he's practically at school as much as I am. And I want to thank you again for this honor and this selection. And thank you, Connie, for calling me back. So tell Connie, thank you. Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions?
Oh, yes. First of all, thank you for answering the phone, because we are so lucky to have you. And yes, you're so kind to talk about the mix of folks that were nominated with you. It's an outstanding, I mean, just a small percentage of the amazing people who work for Burbank Unified. And to be singled out even from that group, you're pretty special, because that's a really special group of folks. So congratulations and thank you for, thank you to your grandparents for choosing us all those years ago, and that it brought you back home. So that's super cool. Thank you.
I'm just going to recognize myself.
Do it.
I am. It's been a real, I feel like we got to know each other a little bit better over this last year, whether it was going on a field trip for alternative education or the real pleasure of being a part of the graduation ceremony is at Mag Park in Magnolia just a couple of weeks ago. And Mag Park in Monterey, excuse me. But what I was reflecting on at both of those graduation ceremonies is like, just how much the students love you and respect you and like are really, really see you as a leader, not because you because you made yourself their leader, but because they want to follow you. And I think that's really beautiful. And I'm really excited for everything that you're going to bring to Alt Ed, because I think you just have this really, it's like deep in your heart. And I just, I really see that in you. And I'm really excited for you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't cry. I wanted to congratulate you, but also want to thank you to acknowledging your colleagues. I think we should, I think teachers don't get the recognition they deserve. And I hope that, you know, by you acknowledging your colleagues and all the hard work you do, maybe people start really appreciating more what all of our teachers do. I hear the stories. I am in the field of education, but higher, but having our son and seeing what, even as a parent, we have to deal with. I hope that, you know, people remember, you should be thanked on daily basis. You should be recognized on daily basis. So on my behalf, I thank you and all the teachers on daily basis. What you do is difficult, but at the same time, you have the most important job in our society, shaping the next generation. So thank you for all you do, and thank you for your son being there, and your husband, of course. Congratulations. Thank you.
I'll try to make this quick. You have been very patient with me, and let me stop by Monterey about a billion times to learn from you and your phenomenal staff. I do want to just shout out Adriana, Dennis, Narne, and Dr. Miller for the phenomenal work they also do, day in and day out. I mean, as I was hearing the names, right, I was reflecting on how lucky we are to have such extraordinary leaders in the district. But the amount I've learned from you has been pretty unbelievable. And not just from reading your master's thesis, which is so good, everyone should read it, but just from seeing the way that you lead. I mean, the graduation, Monterey's graduation was just joyful. I mean, it was just pure joy. And the pride that the students felt in themselves and their families, that's a testament to you and the whole Monterey team, that they were so proud of what they've accomplished. And they should be. So I just, to echo what Ms. Ponser Kamkar said, I know there's just so much more to come. And I look forward to partnering with you and learning from you and just working together to support our kids in the extraordinary way that you do every day. So thank you. It is well deserved, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports from the board and staff. 9A is our placeholder for our BTA and CSCA reps. It looks like we do not have either of them here tonight. And so we will move forward to 9B, reports from the superintendent.
Thank you. I will forfeit my comments until the next opportunity.
Thank you, Superintendent. We will move on to 10A, requests to address the board, public communication. An individual or group representative present this evening may address the Board of Education on any agenda item or on any subject within the jurisdiction of the school board by completing a white request card and turning it in to Ms. Quintero. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker except by unanimous consent of the Board of Education. The superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department for review. The district is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating. We have no virtual public speakers, so we will move on to cards. I have three cards. First is Schlossman.
Cindy, can you take a picture with?
Adriana.
And the other nominees?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, absolutely.
And then just, you know, everyone in the audience.
Oh, we got a tie. We're going to tie for the night? Match and shoes? I love this. They're coolest.
This is Monterey colors.
That's true.
Come on, everybody. It's Monterey colors.
That is going to make me cry. No, you should be in the middle. I know you don't want to be, but really. Get in the middle. Congratulations, everybody. Congratulations. Hashtag congratulations. Okay. Mr. Schlossman. Sorry, followed by Patty Ivankavic.
You know, Ms. Weisberg, that's not the name I wrote on the card. And I just don't understand why you won't let me speak under the name I want to speak on. You do it all the time, all day, every day. So, okay, you know, of course, you saw the future. You knew I was going to talk about you not standing up on this sacred day today. 2,501 men and women gave their lives 80 years ago today. We're talking about the invasion of Normandy. Over 4,400 persons, United States citizens were wounded, and you won't stand up for them. It makes me sick, and it makes so many others sick around you as well. They don't say it to your face, but they've told me. Over here, I'm sensing some changes are in the works. It's just how I feel. 13A on your agenda. This is an important deal, because the electorate needs to be informed. And I want you to allow for more words so the potential candidates can say what they need to say. 13E, I'm glad you pulled it off the agenda. It was one of the worst poorly written reports I've ever seen, and it didn't have a conclusion of how much money you would be spending. So if you bring that back, I'd like to know how much you'll be spending on that. That business of a dollar and change a day doesn't fly for me. I had some words for Ferguson from the last week's last meetings. I was going to tell him to get that chip off his shoulder and stop playing the victim card, which he does to perfection. And he's been doing it for many years. So if you're watching, Mr. Ferguson, give that some thought. At the last meeting, Ms. Weisberg, you did something despicable that I've never seen before in decades. before in decades of coming to these types of meetings. You instructed the superintendent not to answer my question that I was asking about on the agenda. Do you remember the question? It had to do with the phrase in one of your reports that you were voting on, confidential employees. I asked about it. What does that mean? And I'm not playing games with you. I don't know everything. I want to know what that meant. He didn't answer the first time. I asked superintendent again, and he was getting ready to answer, and you told him not to answer. That's despicable. I don't know why you would do it. What are you hiding? I'm talking about this bond. I want to know, I want to see transparency with this group. When I come here and ask a legitimate question about something on the agenda, why wouldn't you answer? It's sickening. We were talking about emotions, you know, at the last meeting? I can get emotional. I'm not making decisions on a $217 million budget. You are. You should have a clear head when you make these decisions. Part of the fun, we're talking back, back about the First Amendment and my right to stand here anonymously if I choose to, which you won't grant me. Part of the fun of creating online social media page can be picking a creative or funny username, sometimes unrelated to the name on our government ID. Do you see I'm allowed to do that? And you do it every day on your social media. Do you put, whatever your name is, Weisberg on it, on every website? No, I don't think you do. I don't believe it. Anonymous, anon, anonymous, I can't even say the word. Anonym, I can't say it. Can protect privacy and keep people like whistleblowers and activists safe. It's a real deal. The First Amendment protects anonymous speech and speech made using a synonym or assumed name. It's allowed. I don't know why you do it. I guess you can. I called ten lawyers. I'm waiting to get back. I hope they call me. Okay, our economy, everything I look is a disaster. Rubio's Coastal Grill leaving California. These folks bought homes thinking they're going to refinance. They're not. Burbank announces new affordable housing, ribbon cutting. You know, they're trying to help people who can't make it. And what are the five of you doing? Taking $1.1 billion out of our pockets that does not need to be taken. Let's read this sign.
Thank you. Your time is up.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Patty Ivankovic, followed by Sharon Andror.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Superintendent Pramo, and those of you in the audience tonight. My name is Patty Ivankovic, and I am your current DHH specialist for the Burbank Unified School District. I have been here for over thirty-five years. I'm sorry. Give me just a minute. I've been here for over thirty-five years, working for this district, before when it was a private sector, private to public sector, and now as a portion of the Burbank Unified School District's public school. My retirement is approaching at the end of June. Tonight, I wanted to address a few items of large concern to me. This program has a rich history, one that BUSD should be incredibly proud of. There have been ongoing frustrations, lack of transparency and communication in regards to the ASL courses that are currently being offered at Burbank High School. The concerns are valid, because this is not just ASL classes to this community, and it's not just a language concern. It impacts the community in Burbank, the students, the parents, the educators, and beyond. The DHH program in Burbank has been a model program that has drawn people from all over the world, not only to come see the program, but families to relocate to Burbank, Glendale, and Laconyatta, aiming to establish their lives as residents here for this particular DHH program. That's why we call it the DHH program in Burbank. It is a much larger community than what you see here. It includes deaf, hard of hearing, and hearing students, not just those who have deaf family members. But those students that want to learn American Sign Language as their foreign language and should have the right to do so. It is important to recognize that the language and culture cannot be separated. They have to survive hand in hand. So no ASL class at Burbank High School can be excused from deaf students either. They currently take that class as foreign language credit. If you in Burbank notice out here in the community, there are so many students in this community, hearing, deaf, and otherwise, who are out in public, whether it be Starbucks, Target, any area that you frequent in Burbank. If you ask a student that you see signing, where did you learn it? The answer will be Burbank High School, and they will say that with pride. This program has been allowing students to go to CSUN, to major in deaf studies, to teach in the deaf education system, to become sign language interpreters. And I know that, because I hire these people back after they graduate from college. They're proud to leave Burbank and proud to come back to the place that they call home. And most of the people we have working here are people I have known since they were students here, that again, come back to work for this program. And I say work for me. They're working for the district, but they work here because of the pride that I have helped establish as a part of this program, because I have ran this program in the district for so many years. Now, several weeks ago, the community was in awe when, or shocked, when students went home and informed their parents that no more ASL classes would be taught at Burbank High School. Now, immediately, the hearing parents of these hearing students became concerned, brought this information to multiple people's attention, and of course, word spread, as it does on social media, and as it does in the city of Burbank, like wildfires. The deaf community is very small, and immediately, they jumped to action and started contacting me, trying to figure out what was going on. And I'm not really a part of that portion of the program, but again, my roots are deep in this district, so I was also concerned as this was brought to my attention. Now, the reason for that is Burbank Unified School District said that the position had been posted, that it had been there for a long time, and that is actually not accurate information. I was watching the internal postings as well as EdJoin. It was not on either location when the district informed families that it in fact had been posted. Then I saw emails coming out later saying, okay, now we do have, you know, someone working on this, working to post the position with HR. And five days later, sure enough, the position was actually posted on EdJoin, as well as internally with the BUSD website. Now, I'm not sure why someone would say it was there, when in fact, it was not at that time. Now, on Monday, June 3rd, the new principal of Burbank High, Narney, was, did a beautiful job disseminating the information to the families to let them know what was going on. But now, the community has lost trust in the district as a result of this, because they feel there was no transparency and that information was not clearly disseminated to the community. Now, again, I was contacted, and I was asked what's going on. Okay. Sorry, I wasn't finished, but. I'm sorry. Can I, can you just tell me to shut up when I need to shut up? I'll just finish what I have. It's not much longer. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I really do. Thank you. Okay, so Narney did a beautiful job, you know, but the lack of trust has already, it's already in existence now because of what happened. And I know I'm retiring June 30th. That's my official retirement day, but I, I can't leave this. I can't leave it the way it is. Like, I'm, I'm so deeply rooted, it's, I'm, I'm here. And it's a concern. I know we do have one applicant currently ready to go. I'm aware that, I believe the interview was supposed to happen this morning. I'm not sure what the outcome of that was. I know that's not my current business, but I know the interview was supposedly happening, and I am very hopeful that we have an ASL teacher that will be in place for next year. One of the reasons I'm here addressing this tonight is because I don't want this to repeat itself. I don't think the community should have to go through this scare again. We need to understand, and, you know, people were saying, oh, well, students can just go take classes at the community college. And they can. I do teach part-time at the community college on the side in ASL, so I know I have a lot of high school students in my class up in the Santa Clarita Valley. So I'm aware that that's a possibility, but the culture is not there. There are deaf students that live, breathe, and function in this district, where hearing students learn the language and the culture. And it has been beautiful, and it can continue to be beautiful. But those pieces of beauty are being stripped from this program as we speak. The position needs to continue to be posted. You can't just interview someone and say, oh, well, that applicant wasn't accepted, and then just leave it and, and close the door. You can't do that. Students that are graduating from college in November and December start looking for jobs. They want their internships. They want their student teaching. You can continue to publicize the position if the current applicant isn't accepted for whatever reason, right? There's people in our field that are available and ready to go, and we need to make sure that the position, like I said, stays posted. This is a really crucial time for the community here. Another concern I have is considering the removal of these American Sign Language classes is how will some of our students meet their foreign language requirements, our deaf students? Deaf students can, they can take Spanish. Don't get me wrong, I took Spanish in high school. I'm deaf, and I took Spanish. I do remember, you know, what I learned. We do have some students that can take Spanish, but many students want to take American Sign Language, because it's accessible for them. It's visual. They learn about their own culture, things that they never learned growing up in their homes with hearing people. It's a rich environment for them. They still need to know their language, the grammatical structure of their language. We have a lot of students also that are maybe not deaf, that are nonverbal, that can take American Sign Language to communicate in the world beyond high school. So we need to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those students as well. And really, the district, it feels like deaf students are being denied access to their appropriate education. Also, just to backtrack, Kim, the interpreter, is a perfect example tonight, who is standing here, who is being my voice. She is a product of the Burbank Unified School District, going through the American Sign Language classes. And I remember sitting with her when I hired her. How many years ago? Twenty-three years ago, when I hired her, right? I've been here thirty-five years. I knew somewhere in that timeframe, Kim was hired, but I remember sitting across from her in her interview, and she was not the best interpreter by any means, but I trusted that she would make it, because, and she knows that. We've talked about it. It's fine. Because she was a product of the Burbank School District, and look at her today, because of the American Sign Language classes she started with in Burbank. The last thing I want to say, there's so many more things to say, but the last thing that I would like to say is, the deaf community is a marginalized group of folks. We are marginalized. Burbank Unified says that they are allies of said community, and I am not by any means attacking anyone who's sitting here. I'm not talking about anyone who's holding any position. I'm just saying, there are people in this district who are not allies of the deaf community, and that has been made very clear to me in recent years. There are people here who do not support what we are trying to do for the deaf children in this community. Now, tying that into tonight's meeting, I'm disappointed, and this is a bittersweet moment for me, because parents called the district office and requested a sign language interpreter for the meeting tonight. A deaf person was asked for their name, and was said, oh, well, you're not speaking in public comment. We're not providing interpreters if you're not speaking. That parent reached out to me, and that's disappointing. I thought, okay, I wasn't sure how you were going to respond if you found out I was the one who was maybe going to be coming to speak, but a parent in the community, who's deaf, has a right to be here with access to communication. And then they said, oh, well, wait, we need to get back to you. And then they said, we'll have an interpreter only just for that small portion of the meeting when you're providing public comment. What time were you told? It doesn't matter. The number of hours, whatever. I think it was reserved from 6:30 to 8:30. The district was willing to pay for an interpreter from 6:30 to 8:30. But I want to know what's happening before 6:30, right? I want to see my colleagues win awards. They, I deserve to be able to have access to that communication. So the meeting starts at six, and I sit here in silence, waiting, but luckily, both Kim and Stuart were willing to come here before they're getting paid, and I thank them for coming early to provide access to communication for those of us in the audience, because the district refused. The district wasn't willing to pay for that. They're only paying from 6:30 to 8:30, but your meeting started at 6:00 PM, and there's deaf people in the room. Deaf people have the right, and we shouldn't have to let you know so far in advance. I understand. I lived my whole life asking for interpreters weeks in advance. I've been doing this my whole life. I understand that. I tell the parents the same thing. Two or three days in advance, preferably further in advance if you know. I understand that. And they say, well, hearing people don't have to do that. They don't have to ask in advance. I get that, but it's a service, and it's expensive. I understand that. I am not denying that. I am not objecting to that. But if a deaf person says, we're coming to a public event, open to the public, they should have access for the full meeting. And tonight is, unfortunately, after thirty-five years, this is the first time I've ever been to a school board meeting, and the last, unfortunately. So I just, I want to be a part of this. I want to be a part of tonight. And yeah, this process has been very interesting. And, you know, maybe I'll be back in the future. But I want to thank you for your time. Thank you for hearing me out. We don't have, I hope we don't have an issue with the ASL program again. I hope that this has been solved. It was just heartbreaking to know that it was potentially going to be taken away. And this community that is sitting here is strong, is, they are vibrant members of this community in the city of Burbank. Many of them have, were former employees. Their children went through this program, both hearing children and deaf children. And unfortunately, many are on vacation. June is a bad month. We had so many more deaf people that wanted to be here, but we are important, and this is important. So thank you for giving me the extra time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Sharon Andror, followed by Annie Marcarien.
Hi, everyone. To Board of Education, to all the members of the BUSD who are here, thank you for all of your hard work. I know that these nights are not easy, and this is definitely not an easy job. Again, my name is Sharon Andror. Next week will be twenty-seven years ago that I made the choice to move my entire family to Burbank, from LA, when we found out that all three of my children were deaf. We picked Burbank specifically, because it was a unique program. And Patty was here. And Kim was here. And all of the parents that were here. We had a parent-infant toddler program. We had the toddler program that led into preschool at Washington Elementary School, at John Muir, and then at Burbank High. My three deaf children had a strong connection to the hearing students that were in their classroom, because of the unique program that allowed them to all sign together, that no other district has, not even LAUSD. They don't hold a candle to what Burbank has. People move here because of this program. We have hearing and deaf teachers who sign fluently, hearing and deaf students who sign fluently, staff members, office members who sign. It is a beautiful program. It is worth moving here. It was worth me moving here, twenty-seven years ago, and the market was hot at that time. Let me tell you, it was hard. It was. And now, all three of my children are grown up. They went through the foreign language program. My son picked Hebrew, so we had to go to a different program for him to learn Hebrew, because Burbank High School obviously doesn't have Hebrew. My other two children went through the ASL program as deaf children. They didn't have a class to learn their language growing up. We take English as hearing people. Deaf students don't take ASL, so they were able to do that at the high school, to learn the rules of their language, the facial expressions, the grammar, so many things that they didn't learn growing up naturally as signers, and the culture. So it's more than just learning sign language. It's more than what you think. We also are a pipeline in this district, directly to CSUN, Burrows High School, all of the other ASL programs are pipelines, and it would be an absolute shame if Burbank High School decided, for whatever reason, to close their ASL programs, or move them to online. It would be a shame. It's not right. ASL has to be physically learned in person. It is a visual language. Zoom is not an effective way to teach ASL. We have CSUN, again, we are a pipeline for people, hearing people, that want to become interpreters, teachers for the deaf. All three of my children grew up with all of their friends being hearing, who signed fluently. We even have a hearing friend who faked that she was deaf.
We even have a hearing friend who faked that she was deaf and no one even knew that she was interpreting for us, right? All of my children have relationships with hearing people who are a part of this district who learned ASL here and they are still very much a part of our lives. Again, 27 years later. So I hope that Burbank High School will continue their strength in the ASL program, whether it's a deaf teacher or a hearing teacher, as long as they are fluent in sign language, know the culture and they continue the program the way it has been. That is the goal. And if you need help from the deaf community, we're here in numbers, getting the word out. I would happy to be running a Facebook page. I actually run one for our former graduates. That's where this all blew up. We had people who reached out to me, text Patty, the teachers freaking out, having no idea what was going on, right? That lack of communication between the staff, the parents, the community, the friends and the transparency didn't happen. So we posted this on Facebook and hundreds of people responded and we became a unified community. We are very tight knit and we run in solidarity. And we just want to be here to make sure that we're heard and if you need help, reach out to us. There's strength in numbers. We can help with the job description. You need help getting the word out, advertising. We have people that are happy to come help. So please, please, please reach out to the deaf people in the community. And thank you again for your time tonight.
Thank you so much. Our final speaker that I have is Annie Markarian.
Good evening, Annie Markarian, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight regarding the district's budget and LCAP annual update. I commend the board and the administration for the hard work and dedication involved in crafting this budget. However, I would like to ask whether we are truly doing all that we are capable of for students at all ability levels, irrespective of their demographics or background. As you know, our district is home to a diverse student population with a wide range of abilities, talents and needs. It's our collective responsibility to ensure that every student, regardless of their ability level, receives the support, resources and opportunities necessary to thrive. Specifically, I have concerns about whether this proposed budget adequately addresses the needs of advanced learners, struggling students and the general student population. Specifically, are we providing sufficient resources for gifted and talented programs, advanced coursework and opportunities for enrichment that challenge these students and help them reach their full potential? Are we investing enough into remedial programs, special education and support services to help students who are struggling academically or have special needs? Are there enough trained professionals and resources to ensure these students receive the individualized attention they require? And finally, are we ensuring that the general curriculum is robust, engaging and well-rounded, offering a variety of subjects and extracurricular activities that cater to different interests and future aspirations? I ask these questions having thoroughly reviewed the 2324 LCAP annual update, the individual district goals set forth therein, as well as the numerous metrics to evaluate progress on those goals. If we will take a look at goal number one, it says students will be career and college ready via high quality instruction to state standards. There are over 40 metrics to evaluate the progress on this one goal. By and large, not only did the district not meet their goals, but on several of the goals, the current district performance is below the original baseline from several years ago. Of the 40 metrics, the district did not meet internal expectations in over 25 areas. If you look at page eight of the annual update, and I'm sorry there is not, it's not numbered. It refers to college and career readiness. The baseline in 2018 and 19 was 67% with a goal to improve that number by 2% per year. Based on the current data reported in your annual update, that number is now 49%. Less than half the students graduating from Burbank Unified School District are college and career ready. You see a similar decline in math and English language arts. That decline seems to be attributed to COVID, but yet I don't see anything in this budget that focuses on addressing those learning gaps. I urge the board to consider these questions and concerns carefully as you move forward. It's crucial that our budget reflects a commitment to excellence and equity in education, ensuring that all students, regardless of their ability level, are given the opportunity to succeed. I thank you for your time.
That looks like all of our cards. Britta Maslik.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Weisberg, Vice President Agata Kanyan, Clerk Ponchar Kamkar, Board Members Tabit, and I'm sorry to miss Steve tonight, Superintendent Dr. Pramo and District Staff. My name is Britta Maslik and I've been in the district for 34 years and I've been a counselor at Burbank High School for 24 years. I'm addressing the board tonight to discuss a solution to save $350,000 so that certificated counseling positions can be saved. The solution I bring forward may not be a good political or optic move, but I believe it's good for kids as it keeps the cuts furthest away from district, from direct services for students. To understand the impact on students at Burbank High School, if the Burbank High School counseling position, the sixth counselor is cut, is cut, the over 350 ELD students would be redistributed among the remaining counselors and this would affect not only the services that they receive, but also the counseling services that the entire student body of almost 2,500 students would receive. Our intervention counselor had over 2,000 individual QR requests from his caseload. So 2,000 requests for students for him to see them. The other five counselors had between 1,100 and 1,300 individual QR requests each. So just by that statistic, we can see that our ELD students are students that need a lot of help. Burbank High School also has two designated counselors who work exclusively with our NAF students. And we have over 600 students and I left my numbers at work, so I don't have the exact numbers. But cutting a counseling position would then also redistribute these students and again, would affect services to all of our students. For those of you that remember, when we first received LCAP funding many, many years ago when the structure of funding changed, parents and students were surveyed and one of the most important needs that came about was to provide access to academic counseling services. And that's why a sixth counselor was added at the high school to honor what parents deemed as the most important needs to be met. In the recent December LCAP survey, counselors had one of the highest satisfaction ratings. So a parent community shared many years ago and the data shows now recently that a sixth counselor at the high school is important to our stakeholders. I ask that district staff under the direction of the board not fund the following items listed in the LCAP for 2425. There are three items that I'm going to talk about. The first is not to increase the funding for the Hanover Study by $68,000. And my understanding is that's to study the efficacy of FSA. So I would suggest not spending the money on that. I know that there's a baseline for the Hanover Studies that has to be spent so we can get our LCAP metrics, but I would also love for that to be looked at, but definitely the additional $68,000. I also would like the board and district staff to make the difficult decision not to increase the FSA funding by $100,000. Our city is amazing. They're wonderful partners. They are allowing us to have these counseling services for students and we're so very grateful and I think we want to communicate that to our city staff and council members, how grateful we are. But as we have a current educational fiscal crisis, it calls us to cut away as far away from the classroom as possible and to services to students. I believe that our city officials and community partners would understand that these cuts to FSA need to be made in order to service the most amount of students and to balance the budget this year. Lastly, I would like to ask that we continue to make additional cuts. I know cuts have already been made, but to make additional cuts to the DEI expenditures for this coming year. Once our funding is restored at or above the levels needed to support these programs, we want to bring them back. They are all valuable. Just because I'm asking for them to be cut does not mean I don't think they're valuable. They are. But I just feel like there's a priority right now that our community has spoken about in the past. Our data in the fall showed that they still value those services and so that's why I think we should keep them. Thank you for making these difficult decisions and realizing that cuts away from student services are needed from, cuts away from these services I need at this time. We need to huddle together, keep our staff and continue to petition our legislatures to restore educational funding so that districts like Burbank can serve their students. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we will move on to superintendent response.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to begin with our guests from the DHH community and I'd like to comment with both what was presented by Patty and Sharon. There is every priority to keep ASL as an ongoing world language in the Burbank Unified School District. The fact of the matter is, is that if you just go back four or five years ago, we had multiple DHH teachers at each of our high schools, not just one. As teachers have either moved on or moved or found other jobs, we've had a very difficult time replacing DHH teachers. I take no exception to what Patty shared about the advertising for this recent ASL position. But what I can tell you is that just one summer ago, we posted an ASL position that flew from May until after school started. And we tried to, and we ended up getting someone from the subpool to help us with the position. My point is simply to say that it's a challenge to find qualified, certificated ASL teachers. We work specifically with the teacher credentialing program at CSUN. We did contact them in May when we had this position open. We were asking for candidates to be sent to us. In fact, with all of the social media you folks put out about this ASL crisis, I actually received emails from CSUN saying, hey, if you need a position, just let us know. And that was awesome, except that they didn't have anybody to refer to me. So my point is, is that we're trying that. I am in communication with Dr. Gibbons from LA Valley Community College, asking him to use his resources to help me to find an ASL teacher. And his response to me is they can't find a teacher for their own school and they're having, and they're having trouble. So I, I just want our community to know that I have zero intentions as a superintendent to end a program. What I'm going to have to do is rely on you folks anytime I have an open position so I can get it filled. I think that in my, from my estimation, the miscommunication really happened because we were trying to be proactive with students. In the event that we could not find an ASL teacher, we wanted to make sure that the kids were not just placed in any elective, but rather that they chose an elective they really wanted. And that's why we were trying to get information from the kids before they left school. But that was never because we weren't going to continue to try to find a teacher. And that clearly was a message that we missed. And here's what I, I will 100% take responsibility for. When the counselors at Burbank High School went into classes, I was not synchronized with the principal to know when that was going to happen. What day was that going to happen? Because if we had, and I had synced up with her, I could have preemptively get a message out to family so you know everything that was going on, so it didn't seem like the rug was being pulled out from you. But that was never the intention. That was never what we intended to do. And you have my commitment to keep the ASL program going and I have learned a valuable lesson. And that is that there are several people in this community that would be able to assist me if I come into a situation again. And so I want to say thank you for that and thank you for being here and for educating me and having me calibrate with you in terms of just how strong this community is in Burbank, the DHH community. As it pertains to the budget, I'm going to save some of my comments regarding LCAP until we actually have that presentation. What I would say, because there's questions about advanced learners, enrichment, remedial programs, curricular concerns, here, here's what I want to say globally is that we have maintained our LCAP funding for GATE and that is going to continue. I wish it was more, but we have not cut that. We are not cutting AP programs. And at the high school for our advanced learners, it's our honors and AP courses that they really thrive and need access to and those are being maintained. As far as enrichment, honestly, I'm stuck. I don't have money for get ahead classes. I don't have money for that. And if I'm being really honest, that is not a mandatory obligation from the state, although I'd love to continue to provide that. Instead, what I can do is to make access to enrichment available to our kids to be able to do it outside the Burbank Unified School District for either for pay programs or, or free programs so that it's accessible to everyone. That's at this point in time, that's the only thing I'm going to be able to do for enrichment unless our financial situation changes. Remedial programs, we've been doing that for years during the regular school year. We are allowing students to recover credit during the regular school year. We will continue to do that because we have the A through G grant that is funding our ability to do that. What I can't provide is at the moment is I can't provide those remedial programs during the summer. That does not mean that our kids are not being serviced. It means that Burbank Unified is not footing the bill for that. It means that our kids are going to either charter schools where they're able to get these classes for free or they're going for for pay programs if they, the family can afford that. And, and that is a family, a family choice. Robust curriculum. Any class we do offer is required to meet California state standards. So I feel like at that, at that point, we are meeting a certain level of rigor. In terms of enrichment, we have not stopped, for example, textbook adoptions even through financial crisis because we have a specific budget for that. So I don't want the community to worry about those things because those are continuing to move forward. For example, we are on the precipice of approving a world language adoption for French, for Spanish and for our other world languages and that has continued to move forward and we will continue to do that. As far as LCAP metrics, I'll wait, I'll wait until the presentation, but what I will say is that we've done a couple of things on purpose. So in January, the district team has been working on comprehensive data points that are applicable to every grade level, elementary, middle school and high school. And we are using those data points as a benchmark for how we're progressing forward so that we can continue to see as a community every year where we are gaining in academic progress or where we might be falling back. Yes, we have seen a decrease in some areas and that is not uncommon with all other school districts in the state of California. And we are continuing to work on that. There are a lot of reasons for it and we can get into that when we dig into the metrics for LCAP. And I will comment more on that as we do it. Yeah, I'm not sure that everybody knows, but I was a high school counselor for several years. I understand the value of our counselors and the counseling program. It is really clear to me, having disaggregated and digging into the data, that not each, each school is not in the same place demographically with our targeted subgroups. There are significantly more English language learners at Burbank High School than there are at John Burrows High School. There are significantly more students in the NAF program at There are significantly more students in the NAF program at Burbank High School than there are at John Burrows High School. There is larger enrollment at Burbank High School than there is at John Burrows High School. If we are to make educated decisions based on equity and not equal, then it forces myself and the district team to go back and look at that data to figure out if there is need to increase counseling staff at Burbank High School, specifically because of their demographics, and we are working on that. And I hope to have a recommendation to the board forthcoming. As far as FSA is concerned, I'm just going to be honest about my feelings and, and just share with you that it, not every district has a city that is willing to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to provide mental health services for their school district. This is exemplary on the city council for city board members to be able to assist us in this way. They are an agency that has a longstanding history in the city of Burbank. Are there improvements to be made? Yes, there are, and we're working really hard to address that. Is there room for improvement? Yes, there is room for improvement and we are working on that. Could there be cuts to FSA? Yes, there could be cuts to FSA. What I want to tell the community is that if we're going to take that approach and though, and that is where we might end up, then what I believe, given the history that this district has had with the city and with FSA, that we need to allow FSA due process. I purposely, personally believe that we need to have concrete data on what's going well and what's not. What do parents think? What do students think? What do counselors think? What do administrators think? What do teachers think? I think that's important data. And to have that provided by a third party who doesn't know Burbank, that doesn't know our community, to be able to give us objective data is critical. And based on that data, if we need to cut service, amend services, enrich services, then let's do it. Well, let's do it based on this factual data. And that is why for me, this is a critical piece. It's not an unwillingness on my part to make change. It is a commitment on my part to make change based on concrete data that's provided in a way that has integrity because it's coming from an outside agency. And to be able to make adjustments in a way that aligns with our community based on what their feedback is. And that's why I think the Hanover part is pretty important. Counts, the counseling positions are a priority for me. And when we can bring back the ratios we had before, then I would probably recommend that to the board. So I want the community to know that that is a priority for me. And I will continue to keep you guys updated.
Thank you, Dr. Paramo. Ms. Tabit.
Dr. Paramo, that was a very good and thorough answer, but I'm going to add to it a minute too because. Better? Usually I've never had a problem with people hearing me. So sometimes I have to tone myself down. Very thorough and well thought out answer. I appreciate that. You also need in to add in, add in, I feel that sometimes you're, well, well, the wants or desire may be there for certain academics or rent enrichments, et cetera. You need a credentialed teacher under that parameter. And if you don't have that or can't find it, you can't offer it as much as the need or the want is there. And, and sometimes the hardest thing in the world is being an educator because there are so many parameters to what we do. It's not like a private company or institution that can just, sorry, stress has not allowed me to snap anymore. I can't. It, it doesn't just happen. So learning ways to circumvent or, or finding your way over that garden wall to get to where you want is a skill. And you have it, but sometimes it doesn't always go as fast as we want. So the community needs to understand that sometimes it's not always just what you would like to have, but what you're able to do. And I, I would welcome anyone who wants to take a tour with me when school starts again to show some of the amazing things that we have that are unique and special to BUSD that other districts don't have. But then we could go to another district again with programs or credentialing that they may have something spectacular too. But I'm happy to be that tour guide or get us onto campus and let the principal do that because we do have some significant, I mean, earlier today, we just had a young man who got into three military academies. That didn't happen because we're lacking for sure. Okay. I was just shocked, my colleagues, to read on social media that we weren't having ASL. That had never been a conversation that I had heard. So I'm, I'm glad we were able to work that out. And I appreciate our counselors who were trying to be helpful to our students to make sure that there wasn't a, I don't know, come fall, if it didn't happen, that it, there wasn't chaos, that we were really trying to circumvent something that could have been not good for everybody. But you did find a way over the garden wall. I keep using that phrase. I'm going to keep using it. And we hopefully will have a positive outcome from today and there will be an ASL teacher in place. You have something to tell me?
Yeah, just a really quick update because I received a text from Principal Barzagar. They interviewed two candidates for the ASL position today and they're interviewing one candidate tomorrow.
Fantastic. And, and some of that was, yeah, right? And some of that was with the help of the community. So we do all have to work together, so it's appreciated. And I know the several things. I have, what's that called? You know, my memory goes back. Yeah, I have Alzheimer's. I'm trying to remember who I am. Background knowledge. I have institutional knowledge because I've been here for decades. I just couldn't remember that. I'm so sorry. Yeah, but I, I know for, you know, that at one, we had the tri-city agreement and that Burbank was the location for the deaf and hard of hearing. And we worked, you know, we had families from Glendale and La Cressena come here and they were amazing programs through Washington Muir and Burbank High. My own children, especially my oldest daughter, who has a learning disability, printed text is very difficult for her to, to read. And so it takes her a lot more time. However, ASL was something that she, for whatever reason it was, it clicked for her. The only class, well, first of all, the only language she could have taken and the only class where she got an A in her entire school career. Because for whatever that process was, it worked for her. Sorry for the tears, but I get a little, I get a little emotional. And, and then she and her sister would speak, would communicate in ASL because I didn't understand. So, you know, that was that other thing that they, they enjoyed having. So I, I think the ASL program is amazing. We're so lucky to have it here and I'm glad we found a way to make sure it keeps going for generations to come. So thank you for that. We had a speaker talk about transparency tonight. And well, well, he had a, well, he held up a sign that said, what it said. And it just said, because it's not needed. Well, where's your transparency, sir? Tell me why we don't need it because I'm going to tell you why you're wrong every time. And I'm happy to have anybody come up and speak and say what they need to say, but come up with, don't just make generalities. Tell me what you got to say and why, because that's what you ask of us. So it needs to go the same way. And I think, oh, I, I was now of the time? Yes. I know. I always forget that. I'll talk to you later. Thanks.
Clerk Ponsor Kamkar. Thank you. Patty and Sharon, thank you for coming and for bringing your community. We really appreciate it. You know, I think Dr. Paramo got into the details about what things look like right now. I've trying to been edu, I've been trying to educate myself on the deaf community, on deaf culture. And I am still learning, but I do recognize how special it is and how special it is that we have this program in Burbank. I visited the deaf and hard of hearing classroom at John Muir. And it's, it really is special, especially when you see how those students are able to interact with hearing students and how those hearing students are able to learn about the culture, how those deaf students are able to integrate that culture into the school. So thank you for coming and, and speaking about your concerns. You know, I, I have full, I have full faith that, that Dr. Paramo is going to make sure that we have a teacher there next year for our kiddos. It sounds like we have you to thank for that because we weren't getting there with flying the position, with reaching out to our, our regular contacts. And so, you know, maybe this is a way to think about more generally, some of the positions that we have a hard time filling, right? How do we reach out to the communities that that affects the most and make sure that they have what they need? You know, we, because we also heard at the beginning of this last school year about a real student interest in taking ASL and a limit in those classes. So we know that people really want to support this program. And I, we're going to, we're going to do our very best because it's, it's certainly an issue of equity. So Ms. Markarian, thank you for your comments. You know, if you go back to last year's LCAP meeting around this time, we talked a lot about whether or not we met the metrics and how this is an accountability framework and an accountability tool. And even behind all of those metrics, there is, there's often a story, right? And in most cases here, the story is COVID. But I'm, and I know my colleagues here are not ones for like waving their hands and saying like, oh, it's COVID. Can't do anything, right? So we dug into it, right? We looked at the data to see, did we have the same amount of learning loss as other communities nationwide? And we did not. We had much less learning loss on fewer dollars, right? I remember that. When we talked about setting those metrics at our last LCAP meeting or at the, it was called a town hall. It wasn't really a town hall, to be honest. At our last LCAP meeting, we talked about how do we set those metrics in a way that is ambitious, but that is doable, right? I think, you know, I've communicated to staff that my hair is often on metaphorical fire about this 49% of students that are A to G ready. And, you know, we talked about like, how is that the, the metric that we really want to go after and take big swings at, right? And how can, what's a reasonable amount for us to move that each year, given the resources that we have? Given how much you're actually able to shift numbers in one direction year over year? And I feel like they're setting really, they're setting ambitious goals without them being, without them communicating to our community that we, we're communicating to our community with these goals that we know there's still issues, right? We're not saying like, our goal is 100% because of course our vision is 100%, but that's not the goal, right? That's, there's a different thing there, right? I think you, you said something about like, are we, are we allocating sufficient resources, right? And the answer is no. But we are allocating the resources that we have as best we can, I believe. And I think we've all lost quite a bit of sleep over that recently. And we're not, but we're not allocating sufficient resources because we're not being allocated sufficient resources. And that's a question for the legislature. That's a question for how the local control funding formula works. That's a question for how are we making sure that we're capturing all of our unduplicated students so that we're receiving more money? And, you know, that's also a question for our community who has voted on a partial tax twice. So I would love for us to have more learning interventions, more extracurriculars, more GATE. As a parent, I would love all of those things. As a board member, I would love to see those as opportunities for all of our students. But we need more funding to do that. That said, I always appreciate someone who reads all the data and comes with questions, right? That's, that's what these are for. Ms. Maslik, you know, we met a couple of weeks ago and, and had a, a good conversation, I think, about our LCAP funding. And one of the things that I came away with questions on was this Hanover research piece. And I'm going to talk about this now instead of during LCAP, just because I realized that like you may have a life and want to leave. But, you know, after we talked, I talked to Dr. Paramo about like, how much of this is required versus not? We do think that the, the, the survey portion, because it has to be third party authenticated, is required. That said, I went back to research that I have paid for at work and I do think that it's overpriced. And so one of the things that I was going to ask for when we get to LCAP is can we, if we're not, if we're not in contract with Hanover for next year already, if there's a way to get some additional quotes, especially for the focus groups, that part seems really out of line. We were able to do a number of focus groups, multilingual for less than $30,000 last year at work. Now, that was also my budget because it was through a federal grant. So maybe they were able to figure out how to fit that in. But I do think that the, that depending on what we're trying to do with this research, that that seems out of line. I don't think that solves our problem, but maybe it allows us to allocate funds a little bit differently or have, have something left over in LCAP. Wouldn't that be shocking? You know, I've got, yeah, I think, I think that's kind of where I came away from that. I, I appreciate you coming with, with rationale, right? And trying to find solutions. And, you know, I'll just ditto what Dr. Paramo said. I think we're really trying to figure out how we, much of the changes in our LCAP this year are around how do we serve our English language learners? And so I think if at all possible, if, if we can figure out how to do that more, especially with counseling support, we'll try to do that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be looking at our audience here if you can read my lips, that is okay with you. So I was very shocked as well, just my colleague stated earlier when I heard the news. And I will tell you why. First of all, it would not happen. Second of all, for me, it's kind of personal and work related. So when I worked for the Majority Leader, Daria Fromer, I worked on a legislation called AB 306, which was to provide more programs for Braille institution programs at the college level. But we also had a lot of DHH members who came and supported us. I understand and I know how strong your network is. So my ask is, as Sharon said earlier and Patty, you know, let's work together. If these jobs come along, put it to your network and let us go find these individuals out there. Because I am certain you know way more people than we do. And I'm certain you know who are the people that can really cut the position. So again, this is not going to happen. I apologize for a little bit of a, for God, 23 years plus now. So I appreciate you coming forward. We will work on this. And I, again, thank you very much. And, 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 Miss Patty, we, we don't want to see you go, but I hope you continue being an advocate with helping because these are concerns that are coming forward. And I think we should also look more, more in terms of funding for these programs as we're starting to hit some of the budgetary issues. Just to give an example, AB 306 brought $100,000 additional just for the college extension training in the Braille field. So I really want to thank all of you coming forward and talking about this. Please keep us informed. I'm sure Dr. Superintendent Paramo knows where to find you. So when we fly these jobs, we can also go to your network. And that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers. I want to give a very quick shout out to Dennis Maxwell and our amazing facility.
I want to give a very quick shout out to Dennis Maxwell and our amazing facilities team for flying those beautiful pride flags high at all of our school sites, getting so many wonderful emails from parents and students who talk about how much it makes them feel included and cared for. And that's what we're trying to do here in BUSD. So, huge thanks to you as always. So, I wanna, so thank you to both of our speakers, to Sharon and Patty. It's ironic, because we were talking in closed session a little bit, and Jennifer Nicholson was singing your praises, Patty, and really talking about how valuable and loved you are in the district. I wish you had come to a board meeting before, so I could, I could say that to you then, but I'm glad I get to say it to you now. Two things really jumped out at me as we got emails from the community about the ASL teacher and Burbank High. And we spoke a little bit about this, Dr. Pramo and the board and I, which is, we need to be doing a better job of proactive communication. So, one of the things we talked about is, once we heard from everybody about their anxiety regarding, is there a teacher? Is there not a teacher? What's the process? That what we, what we will do in the future is, we're gonna send an email that says, here's where we are. Here's what we're working on. You know, one of the big misconceptions that was sent out was, oh, it's getting cut because of funding. Absolutely untrue, but we should have let people know. We should have said to you, we are committed to keeping this funding. We are committed to this program. And the good news is, is we were doing the work, but we needed to let you know that we were doing the work. So, that was a big aha moment for me in an area where we can absolutely do better. And I know Dr. Pramo mentioned it before. The other thing that we spoke a little bit about, and this is something we'll talk more about when we get to LCAP, is, I brought up the idea of reallocating. So, if you've, if you've spent all the fun time going through the LCAP report, you can see that within the, I think it's in Goal 3, where we have money allocated to DEI consultant. And something that we've talked a lot about over the past four years that I've been on board is that DEI isn't just for our students of color or members of the LGBTQ+ community, that it's also for our neurodivergent student and other student population groups. It's, it's all-inclusive. That's what it's supposed to be. And so, we talked about the possibility of reallocating that to make sure that we can provide training and support for our teachers and our teachers aides and everyone in the district to better work with special education, our DHH students, so that they can truly feel part of the community and not isolated. That's true DEI work, and I think it's something that, that we can really think about doing. Because it, we've been saying it, but sometimes it's hard to picture it, right? But that is truly what DEI is. So, that was another great aha moment that we had in talking about this. So, I just wanted to share those two things with you to say, yes, the teacher is the big issue and making sure we preserve the program is important, but so is taking a longer view and making sure that we consistently provide support, consistently provide training, not just now, but, but moving forward. So, thank you for starting these conversations. I hope you'll let us know whenever something is not working, because oftentimes, you know, we try to be on school sites as much as we can, but sometimes we don't know until you tell us. So, I'm grateful for the time everybody took to, to tell us. And I really take to heart what you said about needing to be better allies. So, I'm gonna think about that a lot. Ms. Maslik, nice to see you again. I know you had a lengthy, good, hopefully, conversation with Dr. Pramo and with Ms. Ponser Kamkar. I wanted to just sort of talk about in, in a general way. I think more than anything, our counselors see the best in our students and also the struggles that our students face. And in general, you know, the two, the two areas that you brought up, DEI and student mental health, to me, I mean, I think you, you understand better than anybody how integral both of those things are to student well-being and student success. And to echo what Dr. Pramo said, you know, I, I think we all agree that we need to be looking at FSA and asking ourselves if this program is the right program for our students. But we actually have to take a look at it and make sure that whichever direction we go is the right direction and that we don't just pull something and leave our students with no support through next year. The other thing that's, that's hard but true is, even if we were to, and correct me if I'm wrong, looking at all of you, even if we were to, let's say, cut FSA, cut DEI, that's one year. That doesn't solve the long-term problem of how we continue to fund and support six counselors at Burbank High. And I think, you know, Ms. Ponser Kamkar brought it up briefly, but something like a parcel tax and having a new revenue stream is really what we're going to need in order to secure the funding to keep people employed. So, even if we did it, we would still be facing having to cut again another year. And I don't want to put our, our employees through, we have to cut a position, no, we're keeping it, no, we have to cut it again. That's a terrible thing to do to staff. It's, it's just not fair. And I know you're not suggesting that at all. I'm just trying to share a little bit about where my head is at. So, again, I really appreciate Ms. Ponser Kamkar's comments about Hanover and looking for ways to adjust that or get different bids. I think that's hugely important, but I also think having these conversations about the type of mental health services we're providing are equally so. And it doesn't mean that we don't value counselors. I read the feedback that we got from the survey. We know how much our families value counselors. So do we. And I hope that as we continue to get the information back from Hanover, whenever that is, that we'll share it and that you'll continue to engage in conversation with us about what those results are. Hold on. The last thing that I, well, close to last thing, is that, Ms. Markarian, thank you for being here. I really, I'm gonna, I'm like shouting out Ms. Ponser Kamkar like crazy today, but I thought she killed it in her, in her comments. She did. But, you know, it, it's different than looking at metrics. When you're looking at metrics in education, it's just different than looking at metrics in other areas, right? That, these metrics are kids. They're students, right? And so, every metric, and I think you said this, tells a story. And it's not because I'm trying to dismiss it, but if you look at that discrepancy in metrics that you talked about, the decline, that's, those are COVID years, right? And it doesn't mean, well, COVID years, couldn't do anything about it, moving on. It means we're trying to address those gaps in meaningful ways with very limited budget. So, I think one of the, you know, one of the challenging things when you sort of don't exist in this universe of, of education is like, when you look at the metrics, asking why? Why, why does it look that way? Why did it drop? What are the reasons behind it? And how do we improve them? Because I can guarantee you, everybody up here and everybody in every classroom is working for ways to ameliorate the decline and to identify why it's declined. So, I'm, I think it's great that you're asking the questions, but I also know how much work is, is being done. And I think, you know, if, if, I don't know, Ms. Tabit, you offered, what, what did you take people around to do?
Show them what we're doing.
Yeah. Show them what we got, which is so much great stuff. And so, I know the board meetings tend to be a sort of like avalanche of yuck, because people, people don't usually show up to board meetings because they're like, yay. People usually show up to board meetings because they're very unhappy about something, which is totally fine. But I think having an opportunity, whether it's with Ms. Tabit or, or somebody else, Dr. Pramo or anybody, to hear about the kind of work that's being done day to day. Dr. Anders talks a lot about, I mean, he's the metric genius. I know you don't like it, but it's true. But no one is better able to sort of talk anybody through why the metrics look the way they do. I learned so much from him every time we have a conversation. So, I just want to encourage you to continue to learn, which I'm sure you want to anyway, and to ask people about the work that's already being done. Because, you know, while the numbers aren't where we want them to be, I am super optimistic about the direction that we're going and the team we have in place to, to get us there. The last thing I will say, and then we'll move on, is that, just a little fun First Amendment lesson from your friendly middle school history teacher. So, the First Amendment does protect anonymous online speech. So, you can go online and you can make up clownface42@yahoo.net, and that's totally, that's your, oh, no. You can do, you can make up any online name you want. That is absolutely protected. But when you step up to the dais and we can see your face, and you often leave your phone number on a cardboard piece of paper, and you tend to make a mockery out of a very serious and important process of public comment that is not protected by the First Amendment. So, if you want to go online and, and create an account with a crazy name and talk trash about me all you want, that is absolutely protected, as is your right to stand up here and do what you do every meeting and talk trash about me to my face. Also protected. What isn't protected is mocking a process that is important and serious because you want something else to complain about. So, this is the end to my middle school teacher First Amendment conversation. Thank you to all of our speakers for being here. Everybody's comments were valuable. We appreciate it, and we hope that the conversations continue. We are gonna move on to 11A. I'm really excited about this. No, I am. I'm legitimately really excited about this. I'm gonna introduce Dr. Anders, who is going to invite up, hold on one second.
We're gonna invite up Carrie Badonovich.
Oh, yeah, okay. I just didn't want to call you up if you weren't coming up, because that would be the worst.
Thank you for being here, Carrie.
Good evening, BUSD Board President, Board Members, BUSD Ministers and public. My name is Carrie Badonovich. I'm the Director of Food Services for Burbank Unified School District. I'm here to provide a Food Service Department update. I don't know if you didn't see this slide.
Can we get the PowerPoint, please?
Oh. And if you see us working our computers, because like I have it on my screen, it's online, so I need it for every day. The Food Services Department traded a mission statement years ago. We are committed to serving safe, nutritious and quality meals in an effort to support our academic growth and success for our students. Very proud of everything our food service employees do, our school lunch heroes, and everything they do for the students every day. In an overview, we serve about 20 sites. Luther and Dolores Swarda are central kitchens as well as middle schools. We have about 88 employees in about 99 positions. We do have quite a few employees that have two positions. We currently do not charge for breakfast and lunch because of universal meals from California. And we have successfully passed our procurement audit, which is once every eight years, about eight years, and our administrative review this past spring, which is once every five years. Average daily participation, you can see on the screen, pre-pandemic to today, we have over-doubled breakfast participation. Lunch has gone up 31%. That is mainly due to California universal meals. But as a result, our meals per labor hour, we have realized in 2021, 22, to the present, we have increased positions and hours because we are serving more meals. So, the more meals you serve, the more employees you need, the more labor forces you need. So, we've made those adjustments over the years to reflect that. I think we're one of the few departments that keep adding positions because we keep serving meals. But our budget is based on how many meals we serve, so. And we are a different funding than the general fund. Our current infrastructure for this last year, we were friendly because of all this adding more meals. Yes.
I can wait to ask at the end, too.
Sure.
So, you, you just said that the funding we receive is based on the meals we serve?
Yes.
So, is that similar to ADA for us, where it's not about how many meals you prepare, but actually how many? Because I assume we're not funded based on how much food we buy, but rather, how many kids show up to eat it?
How many kids show up and actually put their number in and walk away and eat them, so.
Thank you.
Our current infrastructure, we have been able to upgrade it luckily with the one-time funding as well as the increased meals. We replaced a truck that was over 20 years old. The driver said, no, I don't want to drive the new truck, but now he loves it and he won't drive the old truck. We have replaced 13 double ovens throughout the whole district, 19 refrigerators and freezers. Also, in addition, we applied for some more one-time funding from the federal government of local food source, as well as School Best, and applied with the Chef Anne Foundation that had a grant from the Healthy Something Foundation. Don't remember the name. But in, as a result, for the last, for last year and next school year, we are, have the funding to purchase from local farms. Old Grove Orange is out in Redlands, and Food For Thought is up in Fresno. It has enabled us to bring in different fruits and vegetables that normally we cannot afford. Dragon fruit was a huge success. It has a very short shelf life and growing season of one week for us. So, we were only allowed to put on the menu once. We were very hesitant. It's $2 a serving, but the kids went crazy over it. So, we know, because we have funding for one more year, next winter, we are gonna bring in more dragon fruit. Because it was a test. Dragon fruit. Yeah. $2 a serving, $4 a piece of fruit. The Chef Anne, Anne Foundation has gotten a grant, and we've had SITS employees complete the program. It is learning about child nutrition program as well as stretch cooking. It's the Source Spirit here by First Partner. It's about $160 a week for our employees to attend, but the Chef Anne Foundation, through their grant, has footed the bill for the next two years for our employees to do that. So, I'm hoping we have more employees next fall and spring take advantage of that program. Our current infrastructure is our next challenge. We have, that's a picture, Burroughs Kitchen floor. It has major problems. But one thing for stretch cooking that we want to get to is, we do not, as you can see, have floor drains to put in the stretch cooking equipment. So, as a result, and also, we do not have any hot wells at any of our stools, so they serve out of warmers. They do a great job at keeping the food warm, but it makes very challenging serving times. And we have a lot of windows that make it really hard to serve food attractive, as well as displaying food and keeping it warm, because there's no place to keep it warm. So, this is our next challenge with our current infrastructure. We also have a lot of two-compartment sinks, which were totally clogged years ago, but it makes it really hard to wash dishes when you're required to use a three-compartment sink. And we have, and to do that, we need to upgrade the infrastructure of plumbing. So, as a result, I applied for the Kitchen Infrastructure Training Grant from the California. We've got two rounds. The second round is, I'm totally using it for infrastructure to offset some of the things that normally general fund would have to pay for. And that's upgrading, my major goal is upgrading the plumbing from two-compartment sinks to three-compartment sinks, because you need to go from a two-inch drain to a three-inch drain. And in the results, we also can put in some combi ovens, some vats and some kettles to do the stretch cooking, as well as upgrading some of our hoods and some other infrastructure around the district. And just so you know, there is an RFP coming to you for approval at the next board meeting to hire our contractor to help us do all this work, because it is a one-time grant from the state of California, a one-time money. As we do that, we are proud for our next step of doing more stretch cooking and speed stretch cooking, creating recipes, carnitas, taco meat, Asian bowls, using more fresh herbs and spices, overnight oats, as well as different meat components. And also, hopefully, can continue the Chef Anne Foundation role for another year beyond next year and get more employees on that program as well. But that is what I have to say, and thank you for listening.
Ms. Ponser Kamkar.
Hi.
Hi.
We only met a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
So, it's lovely to see you again. So, this was actually really helpful, because I didn't, I knew that we were mostly reimbursed for meals, but that was kind of the limit of my school lunch and nutrition kind of knowledge. And so, you were talking about kind of the, the menu changes that you're looking forward to. I'm curious how, and, and I don't know, this feels a little bit out of scope for the presentation you gave, but I'm just curious, like, how does the menu get set, right? Because I've noticed, like, I have a child in summer school, right? And the menu for summer school looks like you're actually already incorporating a lot of those things. So, how, I feel like lunch is something that parents talk So how, I feel like lunch is something that parents talk to me a lot about and they're like, why is it this way and that way and the other way? But how can people kind of engage in that menu development process? And like, what are the big limitations to it?
The biggest limitations is the USDA prevents or gives us guidelines. It has to meet certain sodium levels, fat levels, calorie levels for breakfast and for lunch. We only participate in the school breakfast program and the national school lunch program. We do not participate in the other programs that they have available. And it's based on analysis of wheat spans. So if you have an item that's really high, really yummy or whatever, shirtery in the morning, you'd offset it during the week for something lower shirter and it just balanced out for the week. It's more teaching a balanced nutrition than like everything being low. There, the, what the USDA calls the final rule is coming out for next year. So they are actually lowering the sodium and sugar in the items again over the next couple of years. It's a phased-in approach. Our challenge is when you can't cook from scratch or speed stretch, and speed stretch just means like you get the ground meat already cooked and you add to it and you don't take it from raw and then make the ground meat brown and then add to it. So it's taking out one step. So that's why it's called speed stretch. It's hard when a manufacturer has to produce something and then preserve it and ship it if you don't have the equipment to make it from scratch or speed stretch. Right now, for us to make pasta for everyone, they have to do it in batches on top of a stove top, like 20 batches, freeze it weeks ahead because they don't have a big vat to make 1,500 servings at one time. So it's, they've done it for years and I commend them for doing it for years, but the the hope is that we get to the point that it's less work, more efficient, better product, not frozen, not thawed down, cooled down. So we have a challenge. We want to do a lot more, but sometimes the nutritional limitations are we can't serve that because of the sodium level or how it tastes. And it's like you make it the way that with the sodium level, kids aren't going to eat it because you actually need the sodium in order to make it taste better. So it's a very fine balance. We try our best. There are things that some employees bring up and we try it and we think what kids are going to love and they don't like it at all. So it's also meeting the kids' taste buds as well. And sometimes that just doesn't match what parents think the healthy meal is.
Oh, 100%. I feel that in my bones. So of the thousands of meals that you're serving on a daily basis, is that kind of split up evenly elementary, middle, high? Is it mostly elementary? What does that look like?
Um, it's mainly elementary. Each of the high schools serve about, they have 2,500 and I don't remember what Burroughs population is. They each serve only about 600 lunches a day and about, but they serve about the same in breakfast. In breakfast, they serve that in 10 minutes. So anything we serve that fast has to be pre-wrapped. I mean, we make 180 breakfast burritos a day and then we wrap them up and pass them up. So we do it really fast. But yeah, it's a low percentage. So we're trying to more focus on the secondary for some of the things to bring that participation in because they want a more university food cart feel, things made in front of them. So that's part of the infrastructure of the windows and stuff is to do something different, different type of serving line. At Burroughs, we opening, we open something called the bear pit in the back to try to different line, just to like alleviate the line, to get them through the line faster because some kids leave the line because the line is too long. You might even see that at the elementary. The line is too long and they walk up and they look at the line and they turn around and walk away. So the whole point of trying to get the speed lines and us, the hot wells, is to actually serve faster, not lose the customer service, but have a higher quality food so they would come in and want to come in. So, but yeah, majority is at elementary.
Okay. Hello. A couple of questions.
Sure.
Question one. I know we had shared tables pre-COVID and then we couldn't have shared tables for lots of very valid reasons, but especially with the sort of rumor of another industry strike coming our way, I know it takes like a lot of people, but what is the like, could we bring them back? What are we doing with the food now?
We have a lot of shared tables at the elementary. We currently don't have any really shared tables at the high school because when we did put something out, they were more toys that the high school floors.
Ah, that's not annoying at all.
But for the elementaries, they all have a shared table with the new waste initiative. They do have a shared table there. Part, I do have an RFP that's published right now that is to purchase small equipment. And on there is actually, I created a, I saw a picture of it, so I'm creating a shared cart that actually is two-tiered. And the top one is, we'll say, shared food and the bottom will say cold zone and we'll have, so it's a way with a container that would keep them out cold.
That's awesome.
So it, and it's, each elementary is going to get three, so they can put one out, have an empty one and switch it out in between the lines really fast and bring it back.
That's great.
So that the food will stay fresher, not be out in the sun or whatever during the long meal service. So that hopefully will get sometime in the fall.
That's great.
So instead of the shared table because they, just one empty thing, it was hard to manage. So there's three. And then I also bought some for the high schools to try to go with each of their waste stations, which I think most have around five. Haven't figured out how to get those back around the campuses, but I'm getting it. So there could be one at each waste station when that is initiated because I think the waste is coming into the high schools sometime next school year from what I understand.
That's great.
So to be proactive on finding them for those getting ready, just don't know how to retrieve those at the high school yet.
Something that we can talk about, we had, we had talked about this during the first strike, how we can work with our union partners in Burbank to, because they were doing a lot of food drives and ways that we can participate with that, but that's a conversation if and when unfortunately we have to deal with another strike. My other question is, I, when I, I think it was the beginning of this year, I went and helped serve at one of our elementary schools. It was super fun and hard, as you all know. But one of the things that blew me away is that the staff knew every kid and they knew all of their food allergies and they just knew it. And obviously when you get into high school, there's, it's just too many kiddos to do that. So how do we manage food allergies and the secondary level?
Luckily, a lot of them will speak up and actually speak. And if they, it's really funny, I've noticed that kids like certain servers. So even if they switch windows, they'll switch lines to stay with the certain server.
Sure.
Especially if the server knows them and knows their allergies and they get to know them and they realize that they see them and they already know. Are they arranged with the kid that if they have something severe, it's like always come to window, whatever window? And we will make sure that we have it and everyone knows that that is for you. So anyone that has a severe secondary normally communicates with the supervisor there or with someone there and they, they join forces of always come here. That happens with the special ed as well. They have one window they go to and, and so that's how they, they make those connections. And the ladies know their names and everything, just like at the elementary.
Yeah, they're amazing.
Yeah.
Like amazing. So you talked about no drainage in the floors and wanting to revise those things. So just if, if money were no object, if we live, if we lived in a different world, in a different time, like what would, what are the, like, what would you love to have?
Luckily, the KIP funds, because I signed up for the 40% stretch cooking, so it's a requirement that you serve 40% of your meals from stretch cooking to get the extra funds. We received about a million dollars to help with the infrastructure.
Wow.
It's one-time funding, has to be spent by June of 2025. So that's what this next year, the contractor is going to help us do. But the, the biggest thing is the drains and the power. And then we have five, five high schools have those windows that are hard to serve out of, and we have two elementaries that serve out of windows that make it really difficult to serve.
Yeah.
And connect to the students and display the food and keep it. So my goal is to upgrade the total infrastructure, the drains and electricity, and then help those windows at those stools to improve the serving line. And then the other equipment, we didn't use normal Fund 13 money for.
Got it.
So I'm trying to spend the KIP funds with things that normally Fund 13 can't spend at all.
Sure.
And that was the intention of the state when they gave the money is to help because they realized it was a burden on the districts to do this. And right now, it's not broken, so why fit it if you're in a budget?
Thank you.
Well, my first question, I think, which is the most important question tonight is, what's the number one item on the menu when it comes to popularity when kids?
Pizza.
It is, it is still pizza.
It's still pizza.
Oh, I don't know. I mean, so I'm going to, I've talked about this in the past, but I'm going to bring it back again. I have seen schools, especially LA Unified, when they grow their own, you know, vegetables or use trees or the fruits. Are we, because we have some locations that there is space, you know? I'm just curious about the legality of it. Is it doable or not?
There are districts that do it. And then that is something actually this last year when I was able to speak, I was fortunate to have a meeting twice with the First Partner. And that's one of her main things is bringing farms to school and school gardens and things like back into schools. That's like one of her main focuses. And she's trying to figure out how to help districts do that. And districts have done in the past and successful, but normally there's someone in the district that spearheads it or takes care of it. And when that person leaves or retires, they normally die. So trying to figure out how to make it a sustainable program that lasts past someone's, that's the harder part that districts are trying to.
I think that was a concern, if I'm not mistaken, at Monterey because they had a big garden. But what if we get parents to volunteer to maintain it?
That, that's, and that's the challenge most districts is just how to maintain for years to come because normally you do have something that's very passionate and as soon as they move on, that passion.
That's why the outdoor garden is never working.
Right. And that's, that was her challenge to us is to like try to figure out, how do we keep the passion going when the one person that's doing it leaves? And I don't think anyone's really come up with a good idea, but I know that it's always on everyone's mind of how to do it. We just, I don't think.
Let's say in a perfect, well, as my colleague said, in a perfect, we, that, we can legally just take the fruit and serve it.
Yes, we can. Because there is a district down in San Diego called Sweetwater. He, pre-pandemic had 400 chickens. Post-pandemic, he has 200 chickens. He uses the aids and yes, eventually he does eat the chickens. But, and they have a school garden and stuff like that, but it's part of their, I think it's part of the classes with, at that district as well. But they have a big community, farming community down there, you know? And everyone talks about Eric and his 200 chickens. So it's a very unusual program. I don't know any other school district that has that, but they, they have found a way of bringing that in and it's sustainability with fruits and vegetables and chickens. So it's the way to do it. I just, I don't know the solution.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, mate, we had one elementary school and someone in the community will correct me, I'm sure, but at Stevenson that hired an outside agency, their PTA paid for it. And for several years, it was a fairly nice place to be. But then again, as you said, you know, the minute there's not someone there, it becomes a, yeah, a rodent place. It becomes, we have coyote issues now. We, at that location specifically, yeah, well, and then, and then it become, it comes up to our grounds crew to go in and clean it out. And that's, I mean, they're already spread thin and do a lot of work.
I mean.
Yeah, it's hard.
I love it. Thank you.
It's not wrong.
It's not, no, you're not wrong. And I think about like the, he can have the banana chips back. So yeah, I think to your point though, Dr. Arkani and I think about the food sorting piece. And I know that like there have been lots of parent volunteers, at least at Disney, helping with food sorting. And hopefully they're building some capacity in our lovely children to do it themselves. But I don't know how that's sustainable for actual plant care, unfortunately. So then my question for you was, oh, and this might actually be a question also for Dr. Abdalhamin, which is around funding. So the, the facility upgrades that you need to do, you mentioned that like some, it sounds like some of them can be paid out of Fund 13, but like does, will that cover everything that's sufficient? Was this even part of our facilities? Master plan, nutrition support, like help?
I know that Fund 13, if you look at it in a general sense, anything you can see in a kitchen, Fund 13 can pay for. Ovens, counters, tables, paint on wall, not wall itself, sub-wall, the floor, not the sub-floor. So anything you can see, we're going to pay, anything beyond that, we normally can't pay for. This KIP funds has given us an opportunity to do things we have never been able, it's first-time California everyday money for infrastructure. So this is a very unique opportunity and that's why I'm trying to use it to pay for things that normally we can never pay for. So for, so for that, for funding, we're, we're, I, with universal feeding, we are solid to pay for maintaining our equipment, upgrading when it goes bad. We're replacing 34 carts on this next RFP that's out right now that are just, heating carts have been around 15 years that never were replaced and things like that. So we're, we're bringing our equipment up to date. The master plan, I'm going to leave up to them because I have no idea about that part.
Do you know?
I do not remember it in the master plan.
I don't remember it in there either. The other thing that I'm thinking about is just like how, how difficult that must be to budget for essentially that you're, even when you go out and get grants, that you're having to budget for your capital expenses against the same money that is very variable in terms of how many kids actually show up.
Yes.
And so like I just, I want to say thank you because I imagine that that is a big headache. The other thing that I'm not sure if many people know, because I had a daughter that she will go through the lunch line. She has recently started to, I think it might just be the line itself, but she doesn't want to go through. But, you know, we started printing off the calendar so we could say like, hey, you should, like, will you eat any of these things? And, but the fact that she has, I think, nine choices on any given day because there's four things that are always available, I wish she ate any of those things. And then there's the, the variable choices. Like I just, I think it's really amazing, the variety that we're providing for our kids. You know, I would, I would love to see especially like the morning nutrition stuff be like a little less sugar, but I hear you on like you're balancing it out. I totally understand that. But, and I want the kids to eat it.
Well, to help out with breakfast, actually USDA just changed one of the rules. We had to, we were required to serve bread, grains, and could not serve meat until we served grains. And then the meat pretended to be a grain. And USDA just recently changed that, that we didn't actually serve meat or protein without a grain first. And that's something that, and it came about with more cultural diverse meals because in some cultures, bread is not a staple.
Yeah.
And, and we were required, so there, that is changing. And that's something we're changing for next school year is to offer, like, we didn't actually offer like a little omelet and not have to worry, it's like, okay, but we have to give them bread first before we can give that to them. And so there are some changes that came in and I was very happy to hear that. So it was like, so we are looking forward to that next school year.
Great. I'm sure, just make sure you keep the double chocolate muffins.
Yes.
Otherwise I'll be in big trouble. One other actual question though, which is, oh, I know, right? And I don't know if those are scratch cooked or not. I'm worried to ask her. But do we do, I know there was a lot of conversation probably now like 10 years ago in LAUSD about, they were doing breakfast in the classroom to try to like reduce the amount of time out of class. We don't, do we do any of that? Because I can only imagine that that would be a real mess.
No, but.
Maybe for some of our special day classes or something like that, but.
There are some special day classes that they take food back and things like that. But with the advantage that Burbank that I have not had at other districts is that nutrition break in which the students go through during first recess. That's why our breakfast participation is so high. And I think some kids get full from breakfast and that's why they don't eat lunch. So, but that, that has helped because it is a very high participation compared to other districts. And I think it's because of that nutrition, having nutrition at first recess.
One last comment. Please do not take away the breakfast burrito. It rocks. But last question, dragon fruit is favorite. It's a cactus, it's very drought resistant. So if someone, let's say I show up and give you a three-gallon, you know, plant of, can we plant it on campus?
I know that the farm.
It's a very giving fruit. You just said kids love it and it's drought resistant. Why can't we plant dragon, I mean, cactuses?
Yeah, I mean, when you start, the answer is yes. The problem is it creates a burden on facilities, the maintenance of that. It creates, it creates a situation, rats like cactus. It's juicy. And we already have issues with that. I don't know that we want to contribute to it, but if you're very passionate about dragon fruit, then we can look into that.
What?
Here's what I'm going to request of you. You go do some research. Talk to Mr. Maxwell. Go talk to John Yaribe, the grounds supervisor. Go talk to a couple of principals who would be willing to have it on their campus. Do some, some background work on it. Do some, some background work on it before you say, here's this plant, put it somewhere. Because it's.
All due respect, I didn't say it's a plant. I said, can we if we want to?
So respectfully, I'm going to move this conversation away from dragon fruit and towards thanking you so much for being here. And I look forward to hearing from you next year too, because this is so important. And I learned an enormous amount from the PowerPoint and from you tonight. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bring back potato tots.
All right. Uh, item 12 at approximately 7:30. Honestly, that's good for us. We're going to do, um, so public hearing on the 2024, 2025 Local Control and Accountability Plan and Budget. The Board of Education will now, sorry, will now conduct a public hearing on the 2024, 2025 Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP and Budget, per the requirements of the law as presented. Would anyone like to address the board on this matter? Okay. We'll move on to the next thing. Uh, the, uh, the following reports are under the public hearing section, even though they are reports to the board. So we're going to move on to 12B, first reading of the district's 2024, 2025 proposed budget. And I believe that we are going to have the fabulous, I don't, is it Dr. Andrews or Dr. Abdalhamin who's doing? Who? Huh?
Who's doing the budget?
Who's doing, who's doing the proposed budget? Huzzah!
Hi, good evening, board members, Superintendent Paramo, BSD colleagues, and BSD community members. Uh, my name is Maryam Abdalhamid and I'm presenting our first reading of our 2024, 2025 adopted budget. Our second reading will be on June 20th. So I wanted to first start with just a simple overview of our full year budget cycle. Um, this is really a continuous year round cycle. Uh, the first step really is in adopting our budget on or before July 1st. Um, and the budget is adjusted at both first and second interim. Um, and this is usually based on actual revenues that are coming in, expenditures as we're seeing them. Um, we're kind of adjusting as we see if vacancies haven't been filled, we're adjusting our expenditure budgets. Um, and we're really planning throughout the year once we see how numbers are falling. Um, and so for instance, a state may provide, the state may provide a dollar allocation for a grant, but that amount may end up getting revised. Um, thus we have to adjust our budgets when we get those new figures. So it really is a bit of a continuous and fluid process. Um, and so expenditures may also need to just be adjusted throughout the year. Um, so beyond our adopted budget, our first and second interim, we also have unaudited actuels, which are due on or before September 15th. And then as part of our adopted budget, we also create estimated actuels. Um, and so of how we're going to end our current fiscal year. Uh, but when our financial books close, then we actually create the unaudited actuels by September 15th to really depict our carryover balances for the next fiscal year. And this is just some background on how the county certifies our budget at adopted and at the interims. So the three levels of certification include positive, which means the district, based on current projections, can meet its financial obligations for both the adopted budget and then the out years. A qualified certification indicates that there's a chance the district may not be able to meet its financial obligations in the current or, again, two out years. And then a negative certification means the district will not be able to meet its financial obligations. Our status as of second interim was qualified, which is not an ideal state. Um, and this did in fact result in the district having to make some tough personnel decisions. Um, but after making several reductions for the 24, 25 budget, we are confident that our certification will be positive as per the county for 24, 25. So I'm going to start with some high level assumptions that are directly from the School Services DART Board. Um, and so these dictate a few components of our budget. So the Department of Finance, based on the May revised released statutory COLA of 1.07%, which was funded. Um, and then also 2.93% for 25, 26, and then 3.08% 26, 27. Um, so, yeah, sure. Yeah. It may or may not be funded. Yes, this, this is funded. Yeah. The two out years unclear, but it's, uh, yeah. Yes, the 1% is funded.
The other ones are what they're putting into the plans, right? But they only approve a budget on a yearly basis.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, no.
Yeah, so the, the two out years are statutory, but we're not sure if they're funded. And so that will, again, be a next year problem. So again, this is not as high as past years. Um, it is a good sign that, again, it's funded. Um, and so at least we can assume that there is some level of an increase. But just based on our enrollment declines, the COLA increasing, our revenue isn't hit as bad. Um, but, but again, we're not sure if in the out years it will be fully funded. Um, and again, it was only 1% this year. Um, so other factors from School Services are the STIRS and PERS rates. Um, the STIRS rate has remained stagnant. The PERS rate did increase, and so we've just included that in our, uh, our current. Oh, okay, yeah, no problem.
Thank you. If you put it in the report, it becomes tangent, right? For someone to see and understand. Right now, it's something I just talk about.
Yeah.
But here it is, with percentages. And, and, um, it, yeah, at some point, it'd be great to put actual numbers in.
Of how much, yeah.
For what that really means to us.
Sure.
And what it could mean if the state figured it out and said, oh yeah, forget about that.
Yeah, sure.
It's money we get, but that they take right back. Wouldn't that be awesome? I, I did ask one time, I go, do we, do we have to send the check? Can we just?
Yeah.
And they're like, they just take it.
Yeah.
So it, it just makes no, and there's no, and I'm sorry to take over your report.
No, no.
There's no defined moment of when it ends.
Yeah.
And we've been doing this for 10 years.
Yeah.
And we're not the, every district is doing it. So how much do you need to be paid back?
Yeah.
Sorry. You're delighted.
No. No, but, uh, again, these are just some, uh, just some assumptions that we've built in based on School Services. Okay, so then some other budget assumptions. Um, this is more so on the revenue side. Um, so again, we've included our, um, our funded ADA, which is again, based on 93% enrollment and a three-year average. Um, so again, as depicted, our ADA is projected to decline this year and in the out years. And so that is going to directly impact the dollar amount we do receive for LCFF. And so some other assumptions we've made in terms of revenue are on the restricted side for resources. Um, and so we've included the COLA in, in these restricted resources. Um, and again, we're going to show that in a few coming up slides with the actual revenue figures. Um, and then we've also indicated that any one-time revenue or revenue that's been trickling off, we've accounted for this to be removed from our current budget and then the out years, because those funds have already been received and they're part of our fund balance. Um, there's also several kind of recent one-time revenues that you'll see in the coming slides. Um, and you'll see that these are kind of tapering off. But they're really tapering off and then our district will really be back to pre-COVID levels of this restricted revenue. So it will look like a decline in restricted revenue, but it's just tapering back to how it was pre-COVID. Um, so other assumptions, and again, um, this is probably more so outlined in our LCAP plan. Um, but we've worked alongside our wonderful colleagues in Instructional Services on the LCAP plan. And then just as an LEA, we have our base LCFF funding and then supplemental grant funding, which in this case is LCAP, uh, based on our unduplicated people count, um, which has to be greater than 20%. Um, and so again, they're, the students that qualify within this unduplicated people count are listed here, um, but really English learners, our students who receive free and reduced meals, and then our foster youth. Um, and so again, you could see our percentage of unduplicated people count around 36%. Um, in order to actually get the kind of next level of funding from the state, um, which would be concentration dollars, we'd need to be at 55%, uh, which we're really not going to reach anytime soon, I don't think. Okay, so now we're going to start with a general fund revenue overview and then we'll dig into the expenditures in a few slides. Um, and so this has been amended, um, so it's just highlighted there as amended. Um, and so a few weeks ago, we submitted this, um, and then just, you know, revenues have updated. We've gotten new information. Um, and so these numbers are different. You can see, um, well, actually, I don't think it's listed here. Oh, yeah, it says, it says amended, but, um, if you have a version from a couple of weeks ago when we initially put this out, you'll see that a few of the numbers are different. And so I, I want to, I won't highlight every number, but I did want to flag some key points or key numbers on the screen. Um, so you'll see that our LCFF revenue is decreasing from current year to our adopted budget. And this is directly related to that enrollment decline that we mentioned. Um, however, due to the anticipated COLA in the out years, even though our enrollment is declining, our revenues will see a slight uptick just based on that COLA increase and that outweighing the enrollment decline. Um, so hopefully that kind of makes sense that just because our enrollment is declining, the COLA will hopefully be advantageous to us. Hopefully. Um, and then from a federal revenue perspective, this is remaining relatively stagnant. Other state revenue, this is the one that I was saying is seeing a decline. Um, and so you'll see a lot of one-time dollars that we received either during COVID or just more recently related to learning loss. Those are one-time dollars. And so if we, if we have unspent dollars, they are in our fund balance, but we do not qualify them as new revenue coming in. So you can see that we have kind of a downtick in our proposed budget. And then you see a further downtick in the two out years. And that really is closer to pre-COVID numbers, which were closer to 20 million. Um, in terms of other local revenue, this decline here is really based on gifts. So our team decided we weren't going to budget on assumed gift amount because to me, that, that's just not a conservative approach. Um, so if we want to incur new gift money, that's usually for a very specific purpose. So we don't want to assume that anyone that made a half million dollar donation at some point in time is going to make that again. And so that's why you see that downward tick. But hopefully at first interim, some donations come in, um, some other local revenues, and we can see a slight uptick hopefully in these revenue sources. Okay, and so now we'll switch over to expenditures. So we'll start with some assumptions and then we'll get into the numbers. Um, and so again, we use the Consumer Price Index to just create some estimates related to our current expenditures for goods and services. We've included our step and column increases for all our field positions and assumed average position costs for any vacancies that we are keeping on the budget. Um, we've utilized the same per people amounts as last year to create site discretionary operational budgets. Um, so this is about, uh, close to $60 per elementary student, 68 per middle school student, and then $100 per high school student. Again, for site discretionary budgets. And then we've accounted for the STIRS and PERS changes, which in this case it was just PERS that was changing. Um, and then we, we did include a modest percent increase for health and welfare. Um, and this is only because this past year we had a health and welfare cap increase. And so we're assuming not all staff members actually took advantage of that increase. And so we wanted to make sure that we accounted for a slight increase in those costs. Um, and then we've also just funded, uh, accounted for any one-time funding expenditure plans that we've received from departments. Um, some of these are from current, uh, dollars and some are from prior years that, you know, money is being carried over. So we wanted to make sure that we had accurate expenditure plans for those. Okay, so then this is our actual budget overview for expenditures. Um, and so this one says amended, but it actually is not amended. So I apologize for that. Uh, the only thing that was amended from a couple of weeks ago when we submitted this was on the revenue side. So again, I'm not going to go into, you know, detail value by value in this chart, um, but I will kind of explain line item categories and how we derive these figures. Um, so for certificated salaries, you'll see kind of a significant decline between estimated actuels and our proposed budget. So this is due to a variety of reasons. The main being that we've been kind of working with various departments, school sites, our BSD leadership on position control and subsequently eliminating a few positions. Um, we also did not budget for as many point two roles this coming year, um, leaving only the ones that were really required.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Because we've got, Dr. Westberg has the version from the board packet, um, which is showing like a small increase in certificated salaries, for example. And this one's showing a decrease. And here it's red. And so we're just trying to figure out which one is, is, so is this amended then? Or is the increase the right one?
Neither of them should be amended, but what, what number are you seeing in certificate? In the, so you two both have different versions?
The numbers for, that are on the printout are the same as this.
Okay.
I just have something that was attached, like I pulled up the slides because I can't see.
Oh, gotcha.
Not, this is the right one.
Yeah, okay.
These ones that I'm trying, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Right, but she said it wasn't amended.
No, no worries. So again, um, just on certificated salary. So another big factor here is that in our estimated actuels, the 94 million, um, this included several retros and then vacation payouts, um, things that happened this year that we don't anticipate at such a high volume next year. Um, and it's also been historical practice for our department to typically budget for all vacancies. Um, and so through the process this year, we went through with departments, with school sites to ensure that we're budgeting for vacancies on a realistic hiring pace. Um, because it's just not realistic that you're going to hire every single vacant role. All right, so then for classified positions, you'll see this being projected to increase. Um, again, this is based on step and column increases. Um, position cuts didn't really occur in this realm, so that's really why there's an uptick based on step and column. Um, and then our estimated actuels, um, we're not, we're taking into account vacancies. And so obviously, if you have a vacancy, you're not going to have an expenditure. But then in our budget, we're accounting for these vacancies hopefully being filled. Um, so again, that's why you're seeing an uptick. Might change during first interim based on if the vacancies are actually filled. Uh, as far as benefits, the main changes here, again, based on the PERS rate changing. Um, and then again, a modest percent increase in health and welfare, uh, just because we assume that not everyone took advantage of that increase in the cap. Um, and then it may also appear that, uh, benefits look, you know, relatively high. But again, it's based on, if we have a vacant position, we're also assuming all of those benefits. And so this again, will be a number that will change as we have vacancies that are not filled. For books and supplies, um, you'll see, uh, what seems to be, um, a significant increase. Um, but, but, so I'll give a little clarity. Uh, that 6 million is from estimated actuels. Um, and then really the budget for this year was 18 million. And so I've talked to a few different departments about this. Um, and so typically, you know, something like books or something like supplies, we're not going to see the same sort of expenditure year over year. If we have a textbook adoption two years from now, we need an uptick in expenses at that point. And so typically, the budget has remained relatively stagnant. And then in that specific year, there's enough carryover to fund, you know, that textbook adoption. Oh, yeah, sure.
I, I've been around long enough, I should know this answer, but I need some clarification. So textbooks, though, are a, what's the word? It's in a, no, no.
They've got a special fund.
It's a special fund, right. Right, the lottery funds it, but it's restricted funding, right? It can only be spent on textbook.
Sure.
So those even restricted funds are included in our general fund expenditures?
Yeah, general fund has unrestricted and restricted.
Okay.
But yeah, maybe textbook adoption was a, but I, I just kind of meant that there's cycles of spending. And so you might not have that same influx every year for every.
Right, and every time there's, well, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so the 10 million number that we've, uh, we're hoping will be adopted is really based on historical trends. Um, and so we didn't want to adopt something that was 6 million, which is what was spent. Um, but we did think that 18 million in a time where we're cutting positions, um, we just thought historical spending would be kind of the way to go here. So then subsequently, services are budgeted for kind of based on these, um, kind of trickle, you know, cycles, but they're really based on contractual services, um, and then consultants. And oftentimes, these are a big cost because we have vacancies. And so if we have a lot of vacancies and have to get a contractor, that means that this service cost is just going to keep going up. So a big part of this is special ed, for instance. Um, they, they have to get a lot of contractors. Um, and so I do think this is an area, both the supplies, the books, services, is something that we should focus on in the coming years to really leverage economies of scale. I just don't think our team has really had capacity to do a deep dive in these areas. Um, we kind of focused on personnel for this adopted budget, but I think these are kind of the next, uh, big step. Uh, in terms of capital outlay, I know it's very early and, you know, there's conversations about a bond. And if that materializes, then we are expecting little to no capital outlay in the out years. We did budget, um, just for an amount in 24, 25, and, but we're hoping that will taper off. Um, if that doesn't occur, then we'll have to revisit that for the out years. And then in terms of other outgoing, this is made up of a variety of things, but really student attendance in other kind of state special schools, um, debt service interest payments, um, adjustments related to indirect. debt service interest payments, adjustments related to indirect costs. It also includes our balancing across the different funds. So this is almost like a hodgepodge of things, if that makes sense. Okay. So the next part is related to, oh, sorry, is related to our contributions. So these are contributions from the general fund, either in or out. So the main contribution here is special ed, which you could see, you know, kind of keeps increasing. But this is a trend that's happening across districts where the general fund will keep incurring higher contributions going to sped just based on the increase in student needs. So some things we are working on, though, and maybe Jennifer has mentioned this, but we are looking, for instance, in potentially a new transportation vendor. So just looking at different ways to bring these costs down so that the general fund isn't incurring as much. For routine restricted maintenance, this is staying relatively stagnant, but this does have to be 3% of our entire expenditures. So that's not really a number that we have that much wiggle room on. For district rentals, this is actually a contribution to the general fund. And it's a transfer based on the rental of facilities. And then for child development, around the bell or ATB is projected to be entirely self-sufficient in our adopted budget and onwards. However, the 65K there that you see is based on, I think it was Monterey closing. Sorry, I don't know all the context, but my team explained it to me as Monterey was closing, we were paying for YMCA fees, the children are aging out now. And so we have to pay one more year, but then after that, we will no longer pay. Okay. So this, this next part is really just on ending fund balance and excess reserves. And so this is just an indicator for us to talk about our excess reserves. And so in our case, if you look at our entire NYPD, we're adopting a 3% reserve for economic uncertainty in addition to a 3% board-approved reserve. In the full packet, you'll see kind of each line specified there as excess reserve and then board-approved reserve. And then this language is just on the reserve cap. And so this is just stating that our reserve cap is 10% of an unassigned or assigned fund balance. Right now, again, we're only doing a 3% unassigned fund balance, but that's really based, that's called the board-approved reserve. So I'm going to skip to this next one. So kind of rounding things out, and again, in the full packet, you'll see all the columns for the NYPD. It was just really hard to get on one slide. But this is just a high-level summary of both our estimated actuals and our adopted budget. And so again, apologies that it says NYPD, but in the full packet, the NYPD should be there. And so again, some of these state revenues have changed since we first provided this, this file a couple of weeks ago. So that's maybe what you're seeing as, as different things here. But you can see in section C, excess or deficiency of revenues over expenditures. We're operating at a general deficit, and I think we have been for a number of years, just meaning that we have higher expenses than revenues, which means we just keep drawing down on our fund balance. And so that's kind of depicted here in our last row. Again, you'll see in our full packet, the two projected out years, but we will be able to maintain that 3% reserve in the out years. But the district will still need to make some hard decisions, again, depending on how things shake out, if those COLAs are funded, if they're not. But I do think for the next two out years, we should be fine in terms of that 3% reserve based on the cuts we've made and the cuts we anticipate for the next year. So then let me, so then just rounding it out with some general challenge, oh, sorry. Did you have something?
Just want to emphasize cuts anticipated for the next year. We already know this. And that's, that's what makes this conversation so difficult, honestly, is we're talking about the reduction of counselors that we don't want to do. We're talking about the reduction of assistant principals that we don't want to do. But we're already anticipating having to continue to cut, probably not as deep as we did this year. But that is what we're looking at, and it's not just in the general fund. It's also in our ALCAP budget. We already know we're going to have to cut at least, unless something miraculous happens, $850,000. So those are pending cuts.
I have a question about that in particular.
I also too have one.
Oh, I just, so are those, are those cuts in here already?
Not for classified positions, but I think that's the, the next step that needs to occur. I think at first interim, it would be that time of how things are shaking out.
Because they haven't been, because that's in April or in August. Okay, got it. Thanks.
Yeah, it's not great. If the bond continuance passes and we're able to, yay. We talked a little bit about being able to allocate some general fund money that we would have had to use otherwise had the bond not passed. Do we have any sense of what that might be? I mean, I know it's very early to ask that, but at what point, let's say hypothetically, the continuance passes in November, when is like a reasonable time for us to take a look and say, we can actually pull from here and give this money here, like based on having the bond continue?
I think that's a great question, and I think that's a question we can come back and answer when we bring our final
Great.
budget at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
But there's not a bond assumption built into this. It assumes the bond expires, we don't have additional capital outlay, but we aren't making changes to general fund based on the bond passing or not passing.
Sure, but I will, so if I go back, the only piece here is, yeah.
Yeah, right.
That's the assumption we've made. But again, we'd have to come back if.
Right, right, but the assumption here is basically either we're not doing any capital outlay because the bond has not passed, or it's all coming from bond funds.
Yeah.
But we haven't made any of the other, like, the personnel impacts are not being felt here. Can I ask another question?
Yeah, go crazy. No, definitely.
Okay, so I'd actually got a couple of questions on the, the budget assumptions on the revenue side. So we not, so next year, the TK eligibility, like adjusted another two months, right? So it's anyone born, or anyone who turns four before June 1st, I think, I'm looking at Dr. Now. For August of '24, right? And then the following year, so the next school year, the '25, '26 will be basically September, right? So it's, are, how are we building in TK to our assumptions? I guess is like the high-level question, right? Because I get that we are in declining enrollment also, like we're adding additional eligibility for a program that is free and high quality. Enroll your child now. But are we, how are, what, what assumption are we making around TK?
I would honestly have to talk to Andy a bit more just because really it was a, here are ADA numbers and I ran with it. But I don't know if one of my colleagues might have a better answer, but I would have to talk to Andy because he usually provides me that info.
No problem.
No, I mean it.
No, and I'm sure that the assumptions are right. I was just kind of curious how they were built.
Yeah.
And then the other thing that kind of stood out to me was just our ADA number. And I think like, you know, we talk a lot about, we talk a lot about the number overall, right? In terms of number of actual students that are enrolled, but we don't always talk about the percentage. And 93 is a respectable amount, right? Like, we're not low compared certainly to other districts and certainly coming back from COVID. But I think it's important for people to know, like, you know, if I do my math on the state funding, like if we were able to get that to 94, that's another $2 million. Which is like funds a lot of stuff, right?
We, honestly, we used to be at 96%. So I mean, that's a goal for me personally. But that, that is going to take a little while, and you guys get it because you just mentioned it. During COVID, you're sick, you stay home. And we're trying, we're coming back from that. And I think that right now, we're still in a place where people are still following that. And we're trying to change that rhetoric a little bit. Our Nurse Lenora put out some guidelines for when to stay home recently and when to come, when it's okay to come to school. So I think that's gradually what every school district is facing as we move past these COVID years.
Yeah, and I think even around, like from a policy, or maybe it's just a parent communication perspective, like, you know, that it counts when you take your kid out because you want to go on vacation a different week, that it, that it, you know, you, you're making a choice and you need to understand that it matters, right? Like, last year, my child had 11 absences, I think, because she had fevers all the time. This year, she had one, right? And so like, I think there is a piece of those of us who had kids in daycare, especially during COVID, where it doesn't, like, you feel like you're losing money when you don't send your kid to school because you paid for that time. But the district is losing money when you don't send your child to school if they're, if they're well and can otherwise go, right? So I, I think about just how we, how we message that at the beginning of the year, just that like, what it actually, it might be putting a number to that of like, this is what our state funding is, this is, this is how much it costs us per day when you don't send your child.
We were very successful for years in the Burbank Unified School District with the campaign of a, the power of 1%. And I think that we need to go back to that, and that's work that we need to do at the district level.
At a prior school district that I taught at for years, they had a district-wide competition. And that's the school that won, that increased their percentage, got recognized at a board meeting or, you know, different things happened as a result of, of that. And it was really promoted at the school. The ASB did, you know, we painted signs and put it up and your being here makes a difference, you know? As opposed to your being here puts another dollar in our pocket.
I love that, I think, I, I think it's a.
Competition works.
Yeah, I think we just have to sort of also be cognizant in a post-COVID world that we're not, what we're not saying is send your kids to school sick. What we are saying is if you're thinking about whether or not you're leaving on vacation Thursday or Saturday, leave on Saturday. But I, I like the power of 1% a lot. I think that's really cool.
I do have two more slides, if that's okay, and then we can do more questions. But this is just related to our educational protection account. And so, let me go to the next slide. So this EPA account is a component of our LCFF funding. It's just under 21 million of our total LCFF. This revenue really isn't new, but we always have to highlight it here. And then I think there's a resolution later today related to the actual spending plan. It does get audited differently, and we do have to show it more explicitly. For instance, we do have to show these expenditures on the, on the district website. And so we do plan on spending 100% of this funding on certificated salaries and benefits. And again, that's in a resolution, I think, today. And if not, don't quote me, it might be the 20th, but. Yeah, and I think that is what I have.
Uh, Dr. Agakanyan, well, first of all, thank you. This was very clear, and I appreciate the way you walked us through it. I think it'll be hopefully easy for people at home to understand, or at least easier. Dr. Agakanyan, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. So, so my first question is for our viewers or people who go to our website. Remember, we used to do the Ed 100 and we encouraged everyone because I think a lot of people still don't know how we're funded. And then you'll hear people coming to the podium saying, well, you know, you can just do this and fix that. And, and it's not as simple as my colleagues said earlier. It's not that simple, plus the way we get funded, again. And do we have anything like that on the website? Just kind of gives you an overall view of how we really get funded? Because so people can read it when they read the budgets, they'll have a better understanding. Because, huh? Or take Ed 100. Because again, if you're in management or finance, you look at this, well, we can do this and cut that. Well, it's not that simple, is it? My second question is concerning some of these conversations we were having about some of this legislation. And we talked about this during the Five Star Coalition, that there is talks about, for example, the lawsuit bill that's going to tap into and drain our general funds. Now, you have not put a.
We have not put those sort of assumptions in.
That is not in the book, right? So, so.
But it's not in the budget.
So I think that is, again, we're just estimating at this point. Now, given also some of the challenges happening and people don't talk about this, part of the reason why we have such an, having budgetary issues, the fact that feds and the states start, extended the tax season and now the estimates are. So just out of that, are we expecting something similar next year? Or looking at when you're budgeting it, so instead of May, you're going to start budgeting it September, October? Because taxes will be returned again, late again? Have you heard anything about it or not?
I haven't heard anything from the tax perspective, but I think internally, we could do a better job with starting our process earlier. And I think just even those discussions between second interim and adopted need to be kind of a fluid couple of months versus this is, this is done, it's closed, and then we don't look at it again until we start prepping for adopted. So I think we just have to almost react a little bit differently because we can't control kind of what they're going to do in terms of their, like, we didn't get, we didn't get accurate revenues until whenever the May revise. So, so it's really hard for us to do any of that pre-planning. So it's like, we can do as much as we can, but we are limited. But to your first point, the district I used to work for, we had a very transparent website where it was like set up with Power BI dashboards. So people could go and see school site budgets, department budgets. I'm not saying we have the capacity for that right now because my department is seemingly under fire all the time. But, but I think at some point, we could work with IT about doing something like that.
Now, have you also included the minimum wage increase into the budget?
Yes, yeah.
That you've already put in there?
Yeah, both the CPI and minimum wage increases have been included.
Now, earlier you talked about some of the donations we're receiving generally. I mean, the amount is.
We didn't include those ones just because they are very fluctuative. And so we could, again, our team went back and forth, we could include a kind of historical trend. But the problem with doing that, again, it's not a conservative approach.
No, it's not.
Usually if someone makes a donation, it's for a very specific purpose. So we can't kind of build that into our own pockets.
Do we get any in-kind donations? Or is it not even significant to even put in our books?
I, I'd have to look at historicals, but, yeah, I'd, I'd have to look at historicals, but I can definitely look.
I'll do it.
Any other questions from my colleagues?
I just have a comment if I can. I just want to take a minute to tell you just how proud I am of you and the work you're doing with your department. You've been doing a heck of a lot of work. And it's not just, it's like you're building the plane while you're flying it because you're trying to get the budget done, but you're also changing systems simultaneously. And I don't think that people really understand that or don't understand that in a really practical way to understand how that manifests. And I just know that your team has been working really, really hard, and I can't say thank you enough, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Huzzah. We are going to, yes, the budget is the worst, but you are the best. We are going to move on to 12C. First reading of the 2024-2025 Burbank Unified School District Local Control Funding Formula LCFF and Local Control and Accountability Plan. I will invite up Dr. Knappich and Dr. Anders or just Dr. Anders. Solo performance.
Good evening. Thank you, President Westberg, members of the board, Superintendent Paramo, district staff, the USDA community. I'm Dr. Robin Anders, and I'll be presenting tonight on our LCAP, which has been a process that's played out over quite a few months, weeks. This started way back in, shoot, I believe, October, these conversations. And really what we want to do this evening is highlight how we got to where we are today. So our process has the, we get guidance from the state every year, early in the fall and from Laco. And part of the plan is that we have to address eight state priorities that the state, so. They, they give us money, they give us a little extra called supplemental, but then they tell us that we have to spend it on these certain items. And so part of the process that, especially just the last couple of weeks we've been going through, is preparing a plan that addresses and includes all of this information so that we're meeting the requirements of the state. We also have our local goals that we set forth in our plan. And really, this is the intent behind the LCAP is for there to be some local control over funding and how it's, it's dispersed. And so we've prioritized these four as our priorities in our school, school district board goals for our students. And so we align our LCAP to meet these. The Local Control Funding Formula, or LCFF, as we've been discussing, is the, how our schools are funded and how. is the how our schools are funded and how the LCAP and supplemental funding fits into that funding formula is described here in this slide. And so supplemental funding specifically is funded by English learners, students in foster care, students experiencing homelessness, or students who are socially economically disadvantaged. We do not receive concentration funding, just like our Miriam had just said. We would have to reach a 55% threshold, and we're about 35, 36% unduplicated in Burbank. The next slide highlights our population and what those counts look like. This is a snapshot that drives our funding. The snapshot occurs in October. So um highlighting the conversation about this from our LCAP series of meetings is there was a lot of discussion that early in the year, August and September and October, not only should we be encouraging students to come to school and increase that attendance rate, but we should also be encouraging families to fill out the meal application. Carrie Bogdanovich and her program do a great job. Everybody gets to eat for free, but our funding for our supplemental funding is based off of how many students actually complete the free and reduced meal application form. So I think one of the narratives that we've been combating as districts and really all districts in California is a lot of families don't feel the need to fill out that application anymore because they already received that free meal. But it's more than just a meal. It's it's additional funding to provide all of these services and pay for all of these positions. So can't publicize that enough. We will campaign again early next year, leading into October, when we take our snapshot for Seabeds Day to get as many families to participate and complete that application. So this is an overview of our, a timeline of our meetings. We've done presentations on the supplemental budget. This includes the initial budget that we proposed for the year. We get a first interim update and a second interim update, which gives us projected estimates of where we think our spending will end by the end of the year. We have a projected 24-25 budget for next year. These meetings also included review of our goals, the metrics that were just have been discussed tonight already, discussions on how these, how the actions or how the programs or staffing, how that plays out at the school site and how these services are provided to students and how that makes a difference towards meeting our goals for our LCAP. And this year, the heart of that discussion was really around budget because we were anticipating having to make some really significant changes in our budget going into the next school year. This slide highlights that. And if you can walk away from one thing from tonight's presentation, it's really this one slide looking at where we started with carryover ending last year, coming into this year. So we had $2 million in carryover funds built into this year's budget. Next year, we have 850,000 that's carryover from this year built into the 24-25 budget. We're spending that money. We have no more carryover after next year. Tight budget. I just want to identify where those carryover funds came from because it's like, okay, well, we have, we've had them. We we have them now. Why can't we continue to have those? A lot of those carryover funds were from previous LCAP plans or most likely, the majority of those funds came because we were receiving ESER funds or other one-time monies during COVID and the pandemic. We chose to use those funds to fund some of the things in our LCAP because they had expiration dates on those funds. And so if we didn't spend those monies, they were going to be returned to the state. So we spent those. And Burbank was progressive, I think, where other districts and past practice had taken those funds and and put them back into the general fund. Any LCAP funds that we had not spent always stayed in that budget. So so um, we can ethically and honestly say that the funds we received to spend on these unduplicated students have always stayed there. We're just now spending them down. So a lot of the conversation has been um what we need to cut and cutting further than what we needed to cut in order to reallocate funds. And that conversation is primarily primarily because our unduplicated count and and the pupils who bring in these revenues has primarily been increasing in our English learner population. Conversations, even practical conversations with site leadership and teachers, it was obvious that we needed more support to support our English learners. So that's been a a high priority in this year's discussion about our budget and making sure that we um either reduce spending or cut spending enough to increase, still increase services for our English learner population because of that growing population. And so that's what this slide represents. We're also trying to mitigate bigger budget issues with our general fund by being able to fund items that we we really needed to keep um in place and for and be able to provide for our students. So uh, being able to use LCAP funds um to continue some of those services or some of those items, we really had to look at LCAP and that's the most flexibility to be able to do some of those pieces. At the last uh May meeting, when we had um a meeting with the board about our LCAP, one of the things that was requested was to look at each goal and how that spending has changed. So this is a new, a very new, a new slide that really represents that. So you can see the first column is our 24, 23-24 budget where we started. 23-24 actual is where we ended. These are what we finished the year with. And then what the spending looks like in our items for next year. So you can see that where we budgeted, we actually spent less than budgeted in Goal Two and Goal Three. And that trend continues much more significantly in the action items that we are proposing for next year, that we're redirecting money from Goal Two and Goal Three to our Goal One, which is our instructional goal. There's two reasons for that. One is that's where our English language learner supports are, is those are in our Goal One instructional goal. And two, these metrics that we've been discussing earlier tonight, that's where we see um, we need to prioritize and reinvest so that we can rebound from the COVID years and and distance learning and learning loss. So the the next group of slides is is not new information. This has been available all throughout this process. But I just want to be transparent about all of the action items that we're looking at. So these are all Goal One instructional goal items that have been in place and will continue to be in place in our 24-25 plan. The next slide identifies items that will be new in the 24-25 plan. So this is some of that reallocation of funds. And you can see English Language Learner or ELD is the most common thread within this spending. There's two other items, Cultural Responsive Pedagogy and RTI. Those are, I'm going to do the last one first. The assessment programs are how we identify students below grade level locally. So we don't, we can't wait for CASP results or state testing. We need to be more proactive throughout the year to identify students that we can provide remediation to, immediate remediation, so that they can stay on grade level. The other item is really a unique PLC process that is geared towards math and English language arts, really looking at equity and grading, combining our DEI work with what we do in our, as our instructional practices. You're most familiar with the math collaborative and that type of work. And so we've seen a really good growth and tremendous results from that. So we're trying to scale that work and make sure more students and more faculty benefit from that collaboration. So our Goal Two action items, this is all on one slide because um it's fewer items here. And so the top ones are all of our continuing items that have been in the plan previously. The one, new item is really a redesign of a previous item. So our community day school was partially funded through our LCAP in previous years. Our SOAR program is our is our mechanism to continue to serve that student population. And so it still fits into this goal and just a just different description for how we're going to serve those students. Last item is diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so we, this this goal has shrunk just a little bit. Really, the Goal Three is is about our staff retaining and hiring high-quality employees. And so we see the best way fit to do that through these funds and support the this unique population is through these DEI efforts. And so we've reduced the funding that we will contribute towards teacher lead stipends and collaboration and continue with our consultancy to to do that work. And really, that's that's the majority of the presentation. I know some discussion was talked about with our metrics. And so I just want to add my perspective on doing that work and creating the metrics for the LCAP and a lot of our data and assessment. We've, it's already been said, but we have uh gone through a tumultuous three years. And it's important to recognize that when this last LCAP was created, it was using data from the year before the pandemic actually hit. So we're kind of blindsided to say, this is where we're at and this is where we see ourselves going when we did not know that a pandemic was going to hit. Having said that, it's very accurate and I can testify that um learning loss did not impact Burbank the way it did other school districts, that we were able to maintain a high performance in math and English language arts where other, most other surrounding districts were not. And I'm really excited about setting a new baseline in growth from this point forward. Now that we've had the opportunity to um revitalize ourselves and find ourselves in a good standing to say, if this is where we are, let's set a baseline and let's move forward from here. So I'm really excited about that with this new plan. The one I metric that was specifically mentioned was that college and career metric that was concerning. I do want to note that that metric was actually suspended during the pandemic. So we didn't have data or weren't able to submit data on that metric. So it's really establishing a new baseline from where we were three years ago when the original plan was put into place.
That's correct.
Any questions?
You go ahead, Madam Chair.
I have a question. So first of all, the last comment you made, maybe we should put a disclaimer before people come and talk about the college readiness factor. In terms of uh, you know, what's happening right now for us, does it make a difference if they're going to college or university directly or it doesn't when it comes to college readiness part of it?
It's it's looking at, it's funny because it says that it's a college and career indicator, but it's only looking at some very specific metrics that students meet to be qualified as that. So one would be A through G. But it's also internships, um, work experience or or um some other work-related fields, CTE programming. There's some specific pathways that we can use to contribute towards that indicator. But it's it's not all encompassing of everything you would normally think of when it comes to preparing a student for college or career.
And it's funny because I was reading an article two months ago about how like there's a shortage of, people are charging arm and leg for preparing students for SAT exams so they can get into, where there was kind of a, it was a slowdown and then it just picked up again. Where now people are just want to get the highest scores to get into some of these institutions. Now, generally for us, you know, again, just going back to my first comment, it doesn't matter. It's just certain metrics. And I'd like to know what this, just for clarification, what those metrics are. Because sometimes people think it's just as simple as, did we prepare them? Did they get in? Did they not get in? It's not that simple, is it?
Correct. It's us identifying the pathways that the state had. It's identifying our students that meet certain pathways that the state has identified that they want us to report out on.
Thank you.
And just refreshing my mind on some of the metrics, right? Like, a lot of, a lot of the metrics that we're looking at are dictated by the state and by the LCAP process. Or at least, you know, certainly some of the really basic ones around essentially test scores and subgroups is my understanding. And then we've developed our own local measures, which includes using iReady, et cetera, to not only be able to like validate that, but I think like show some of the other things that go beyond just what's in the state testing, right? Sort of being able to show growth and show kind of movement among bands that like a single test score isn't going to tell you. Is there, are there more kind of locally developed metrics other than kind of the the iReady? Do we have, or is that kind of the only local metric that we have on ours?
In our plan?
In our plan.
So uh, the Hanover Research Team in the School Satisfaction Survey is a, it's a requirement for us to provide some sort of survey mechanism to get that feedback. But we get to work with Hanover to design the type of questions that those are asking. So when we report out on that, um, it's meeting that state requirement, but we have more flexibility on the types of questions or how we're going to measure that. So that's one that's unique. Our DEI work is part of that survey as well. So that's also unique measures that we're able to establish. The two main ones that the state's requiring is the the CASP scores and then graduation rate. They also have certain metrics to look at specific subgroups, like EL classification rate. But anything outside of those are a lot of our own metrics that we have incorporated. So we do DNF rate and monitor that with students.
Summit of assessments.
Yeah, summit of assessments as well, so like our benchmarks outside of just iReady. So there are some other ones. We can look at them at some point. Yeah.
Mike.
So I know LCAP is relatively new, 2014, right? Are you expecting any changes or is it just based on revenue, the unpredictability? You know, you you expecting any changes down the road, any major changes?
Nobody signaled that, but there isn't, I mean, there are narratives of districts like Burbank Unified that are suffering because of the way LCFF is established. We just don't have a high enough unduplicated population to to receive the same sort of funding that really surrounding districts receive.
Thank you. Can I put that on the website, on the front page?
So if you're sort of a middle-class community, you don't have maybe the local funds or the the parcel tax or sales tax to make up for what you don't receive in state funding. But you also don't have enough students that meet the free and reduced meal requirement to get the additional funding from the state.
I think this is the type of conversation that's really important to have, especially in light of two failed parcel taxes. It's just helping our community understand that unless they're willing to support us, the school, the district isn't going to look the way that they want it to look. And so I think this is the beginning of a of a much longer conversation that we're starting to have, I think, in really positive ways around the bond. But the reality is, I mean, I think you would agree, like, we could complain to the cows come home about the way we're funded and, but that's not going to change the way we're funded. I don't see, I mean, and we can continue our advocacy, which I know we're actively all doing with our electeds. But like, again, I think we can't, we can't wait because who knows when that's going to change. So um, I think being able to highlight the way that you described it, which is this is why we don't get the funding that we get. And here's what we need to do to supplement it is a really important conversation in the, and the clear way in which you talk about it, I think, is a is a good model for us as well. Ms. Spencer-Kamker.
Yeah, just a question on the accountability part of LCAP rather than the funding. But um, so the California State Dashboard was, is another accountability tool that was, you know, supposed to be common across districts and schools that was also suspended for a number of years during COVID. How do you see any kind of changes of like kind of interplay between the California School Dashboard and our actual LCAP? Like, I I imagine there's like a good amount of overlap in terms of what they're looking at. But do you think that we're going to get um either pressure from the state or additional requirements to use what's on the dashboard more than local metrics?
Yeah, that's where a lot of these required metrics come from outside of the CASP scores. CASP scores are part of the dashboard, but it's, they also report on those separately. The one place where the dashboard does well is that they don't just look at your current status and performance. They also look at your growth. But sometimes for a district that's high-performing like Burbank, that makes it extra challenging because if you have. So in order to get, and for those that aren't familiar with the dashboard, you get colors. So blue is good, green is not as, is, blue is great, blue, green is good, and so on down the line. So sometimes we're a district that will be green or yellow only because we've had very high performance, well above the state, we just weren't able to maintain that high performance. So that's one piece that they've been looking at, they've been trying to adjust. There's this whole five-by-five mechanism to determine what color you're assigned, and they've been trying to refine it a little bit so that districts that are high-performing don't get, don't look like they're not, because they just weren't able to maintain such a high status in some areas. I don't know if that really answered your question, but...
No, I think that's helpful, because I think, you know, and I think when parents are looking at schools, right, and are looking at districts to try to understand, like, is this district high-performing, they're going to look in a couple places, right? They're going to look at great schools, which is mainly a measure of socioeconomic status, is what I have to tell people pretty frequently, not only, but mostly. And then they might, they might look at the dashboard, and they might look at LCAP, right? And so I think that point of, you know, we, we want to get credit for growth where we're growing, but there's also got to be a very high floor, essentially, right? So if we are above 95% in ADA, we should be blue every time, whether or not we're growing, right? Or we can be super blue if we get to 97, whatever it is. But the dashboard doesn't really show that, to your point. And so I just always want to be careful that anytime we're using accountability metrics, that we are like recognizing success and where we need to change things without kind of beating people over the head with like what we think are things that need to change, right? Because I think we're overall performing really, really well. I think our LCAP metrics show that. I think the way that we're trying to adjust how we're funding is going to continue to move all of those metrics forward because we're seeing where we need to shift resources. So that's my soapbox, thank you, bye.
And I think that what you can see in this presentation today is a testament to what we value, because you are seeing an increase in funding in LCAP when it comes to our instructional programs. So despite whatever budget woes we might have, we're investing in teaching and learning, we're investing in our targeted subgroups, and we are producing benchmark data, baseline data, for us to show the community how we're progressing each year.
One last, go ahead.
So this is just kind of a long-term, but so those of you probably lately seen my name like on NPR and everything, it was a group of us, it was a nice coverage on us, it was covered on Yahoo, MSNBC, anyways, a group of us who are trying to change the status of communities like us, because right now we're considered Caucasian. And I know some districts lose money because we go into the category of Caucasian, depending on where we're trying to be identified as Armenian on the census, there's a black Brazilians, for example, they're trying to push the changes as well. Does that make a difference in the funding, depending on what your ethnicity is?
Not specifically, because we're still able to, funding is not derived by race, it would only be English learner population.
Only English, okay.
Where...
But what about programs that are driven for minorities? Because then you can be categorized as minority depending on what you've been going through. I'm just curious. It's a conversation, someone put it out there, I didn't have an answer for it, you know.
Yeah, there's sometimes some funding you can receive if you're not performing well with a certain race or subgroup. We've never qualified for anything like that as a district, but it's been hard to know if we should or could because of that fact that they lump the Armenian population and the Caucasian population together. I think there's also a lot of ways that, the truth of the matter is, is we don't get credit for how well we do do in educating Armenian population, because they are, you know, lumped into such a large group.
Thank you, Dr. Anders.
I wanted to address the one, the one speaker too, felt like we weren't spending enough on programs to extend learning. And I just wanted to address, with this LCAP, that's a confusing piece or misconception, is that there's not, that funding's not really for that, it's for the unduplicated population specifically. So it's not that we're ignoring that population, it's just not how that plan, that's not how that money's supposed to be spent.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Dr. Anders. We're going to move on to 12D, report on excess reserves. Are we...
That was combined in the...
Great, 12D and 12E?
Correct.
One bar. We're going to move on to 13, new and unfinished business. 13A, adoption of Resolution 40 specifying method of payment and word limitation for candidate statements, may have a motion in a second.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian, any discussion?
I just have a question on this. So 200 is what the word limit was the last election cycle?
It's exactly the same as it was in the last, I believe, two or three election cycles, because I checked with Dr. Pramam, Mr. Cantwell.
As, out of curiosity, right? Because it was suggested that it should be longer. Does, is there a financial implication for the district and/or candidates for it to be longer? For both?
Yes, got it. I would also suggest that people interested in learning more about candidates, ask them questions, attend forums.
I mean, I'll say, like, I did a candidate statement, because it was the only piece of mail that I knew was actually going to go to every registered voter. So I tell people that that is why I did it. But knowing that there's an additional financial burden on either the district or the candidate, I would choose not to, because it is very expensive. It was something like $1,700 to do a 200-word candidate statement.
And not only that, but then if you choose to have it translated, that's an additional cost.
Yes.
Depending on language.
Sure. Okay, and so just so people are aware of why this is something we have to vote for, we have elections coming up in November, where three school board members, I'm not sure who's running, who's not running hypothetically, or people who are not yet on school board will be running, and so we have to do this every time an election comes up.
And this will be the first election where there are districts rather than at-large.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seeing none opposed, motion carries four zero with one absence. Moving to 13B, adoption of Resolution 41 regarding the Education Protection Account, EPA 2024-2025, may have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Aga Khanian, seconded by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, any discussion?
Nope.
And just as a reminder to the public, we are allocating that money for salaries for teachers and also, and benefits. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Seeing no opposition, motion carries four zero with one absence. 13C, approval of designation of high school representatives for CIF, may I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian, any conversation?
Nope.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Seeing no opposition, motion carries four zero with one absence. 13D, approval of job description for Director of Childcare Programs and placement on the Certified Supervisors and Managers salary, Schedule A, Range A. Moved by Dr. Aga Khanian, seconded by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, I would like some discussion around this, Dr. Paramo.
Yes, thank you. This is a position that would be paid for out of ELOP funds, and ELOP funds are very restricted on how you're able to use them. And it is specifically defined in the statute that these are for early morning programs before school or after school. And honestly, it's really designed for childcare primarily. And what we are trying to do is create a higher-level position that would take on more responsibility. So it's not just our ATB program or ACIS program, but it's also someone who will oversee our other extended programs like the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, after-school days. More importantly, there has been open discussion on this dais about looking at a sustainable way to keep ATB going. That is an important program to our community. I want it to grow, I want it to thrive, I want it to be sustainable, it just needs to be able to financially take care of itself, because it has been encroaching on the general fund. And so the desire for this program is for someone to do in-depth analysis and analytics on what are the options, what are other options, are there out there, and how can we continue to sustain a program that's so vital to our community? And I also want to say that this is also an opportunity with this position for us to have this person also take on the responsibility of all of our summer programs, which has been something that has been a responsibility of our assistant soup. And given, quite honestly, how far we're being stretched right now, just with some of the leaves and situations that are going on, this is a really critical piece for us in order to be able to sustain the work.
Yeah, I have a question on this and then a comment. So just in terms of comment-wise, you know, I think what I'm excited about here is the ability to coordinate with all of the various childcare providers. I know we've added an extra hour to Kinder across the board for next year, but it's still five hours. And it's still a pretty short school day, right? So we know that in this community, working parents need childcare. And so knowing how hard it was when a childcare, not within the district, a different childcare program closed, and the scramble that everybody went through, I think having someone dedicated to making sure that we've got really high-quality childcare options after, before school is super important. And I like that they're going to take some things off of Dr. Knappick's plate, having seen him at 8:30 bright and early for summer school this week. It'll be good to have somebody else coordinating that. So my question is, the ELOP funding, do we anticipate that that is going to continue to exist forever and ever? And ELOP is Extended Learning Opportunities Program?
Yep.
Okay.
There is absolutely no indication from the state that that is going away.
For clarification, it's not ATB the DJ, it's the...
And I just want to, I just want to make sure that I'm being emphatic, that this is not a position that would encroach on the general fund, as there is specific funding for it.
That's what I was going to ask you to clarify. And you said in the beginning, because ELOP funds are so specific, so this is not money that we could use anywhere else. And I think based on the kind of parent conversations we've had this year, there's a real need to have somebody who is sort of at the helm of all of these different programs who can answer questions. And I think this academic year really showed us how much that's needed, so this feels like an important sort of responsive position.
And I know that you folks on the dais understand this, but for the general public, this is not an item we would bring forward unless we have vetted it through our union representation, making sure that we have their support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Oh, great.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Seeing no opposition, motion carries four zero with one absence. We pulled 13E. 13F still remains. Approval of agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and the Department of Justice for Professional Fingerprinting Services, as presented, may have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Aga Khanian, seconded by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, any discussion?
I apologize, because I'm, my memory is failing me on this one. Is this us paying for fingerprinting for incoming, because I know we were talking about, or we were starting to do that for, I think it was custodial staff? Is this just for anybody who has been hired, we do their fingerprinting for them? That is so wonderful.
Yeah, it's a great...
That is not something, for everyone to know, I have had to pay for my own fingerprinting many, many, many times at this point.
This is a really important equity issue, because it does keep people from applying. And we want people who are great to be here, and if it means we cover that cost, I'm really glad that we're, that we're doing it.
For clarification, so we pay for them, but they can go anywhere that the services are, do we reimburse them? What is this word? Do we have a center just dedicated?
We don't have a center that's just dedicated, they can go anywhere, send past them. Sorry. We don't have a specific center, so they can go wherever live scan is performed.
Usually what you can do to have it paid for is there's like a place on the live scan form that says like, bill it back to this account.
That is correct.
So they can go to any live scan place.
Correct, when the building right next to us, they do that, right?
Yeah, they also do it through the city.
Excellent. Any other discussion?
Or you can just like, find somebody with an English.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Seeing no opposition, motion carries four zero with one absence. 13G, approval of job description for account analyst position, as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, any discussion? All those in favor, oh, Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, so sorry.
I was trying to remember my question. This was us kind of moving, kind of adjusting some job descriptions within fiscal services, is that right?
Yeah, it's not additional money, it's just restructuring so that there's a higher-level accounting position.
Okay, so this is a higher-level accounting position, it puts us in line with kind of other accounting organizations, service organizations. It's, I think, it is a position title I am more familiar with as someone who has worked in finance and accounting than the ones that we were using. So this is not, these are not additional positions, this is just a change in job description.
And I think it's really reflective of the really positive restructuring that Dr. Abdulhamin and Mr. Cantwell are hard at work doing to bring us up to sort of a 21st century way of doing things. So I'm really, it's exciting to see the restructuring happen. Ms. Tabit.
From the thick part, the part that came back, this is part of a response to that, so to speak. Okay, good.
Any other discussion? Excellent. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Seeing no opposition, motion carries four zero with one absence. 13H has been pulled. 13I, approval of federal addendum annual revision for 2023, 2024, as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tabit, any conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Seeing no opposition, motion carries four zero with one absence. Moving to 14, reports from the board.
This is the time.
Ms. Tabit, let it shine.
Okay, I will, thank you. I've got my whole song and dance, I'm just kidding. Last month, end of May, is a really fun time to be a board member, getting to go to elementary, middle school, and high school graduations, some of our special programs, the adult schools. Really so much goes into this that our admin and staff, teachers put into it to make it a very special time for folks. I want to say to our elementary principals, I am so appreciative when you have a promotion segment that is kid-centered.
Yes.
And it's so enjoyable to watch and participate in, and the parents just love it. So thank you for the extra time, and our middle school principals and staff, and our high school principals and staff, who put so much effort, and I may, it probably causes you so much stress, to put those on, but I'm so appreciative, it really makes a big difference in our community. And the fact that we have a wonderful location in Memorial Field to have our high school graduations, that really come off, I think, extraordinarily well. So thank you, and I hope the community and those participants enjoyed them as much as I did.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. Yeah, I wanted to echo Board Member Tabit, just to congratulate all of our graduates and our culminations and our promotions and all of that. It's just, it's a super joyful week. And I was lucky enough to go to, I think not quite as many as I went to last year, I probably overdid it a little last year, but went to Roosevelt and McKinley for elementary, Luther, both high schools, or sorry, Burrows and Burbank at Memorial, and Magnolia Park, which was really fun, because I got to give out diplomas. I got to confer some diplomas. I got to confer some diplomas, which I was not expecting. Um, but Mrs. Weaver, so great, like, lovely, let me, let me do that. Um, and, you know, I just, I reflected just on, you know, looking at those families and how proud they were of their kids, no matter whether they were graduating from fifth grade or eighth grade or high school. Um, and it's just, it's a really special, it's just a really special week. Um, it's, it's, it is a culmination of a lot of work. Um, the only announcement that I have, um, and I've, I've told my board colleagues this, but I want to say at this meeting and next meeting, is that I will not be at the July meeting, um, and I just want to be transparent about that, because I missed like one meeting last year, and I will probably only miss this one meeting next, this year, but, um, I will be, uh, in Minnesota, so I cannot attend from out of state, uh, though I may call in for, uh, public comment, you may get to hear from me if I, I know, I'll just filibuster. Um, I've thought about it, really, I'm, I'm, I don't know what's on the agenda yet, so I, I reserve my right to call in as a member of the public. But, um, I will still be available via, via email and phone, should folks need me, but I will be spending some time with my 75-year-old mother, um, at the lake with my kids. Awesome, so, thanks.
Just a huge congrats to, uh, new Burbank High Principal, her name Barzagar, and to Principal Nup for killing it at their first official graduations, um, and also to April Weaver and everybody at Monterey, and also to the fantastic graduation at the adult school, um, which was fantastic. Hashtag adult school, hashtag graduation, hashtag congratulations, hashtag, hashtag. Um, and also just a huge thank you to facilities and all of the setup, and to, uh, Burbank Police for, um, making sure things didn't get too crazy during Burbank High and Burrows. They were really wonderful and, like, just a great, just a great week of celebrating our amazing students and staff. Um, I'm going to read the retirements. So we have a couple. So, uh, Hallie Fleishman, who began her service in Burbank Unified in 1991. Jane Singer, who, uh, is a special ed teacher from Muir, uh, she began her service in 2000. And Patty Ivan, help me pronounce it correctly. Oh, I did it right. Ivanovich, uh, special education teacher who is here tonight passionately advocating for our, um, DHH students and ASL classes, and she began her service in 1994. So, a long time. Also, uh, Margarita Alvarez, who is one of our amazing custodians, and she began in 2011. Shelley Davies, who's a pair educator, um, and she began her service in 1995 at Roosevelt. And Margaret Morgan, who is a secretary, who, uh, began at Burrows in 1997. So thanks to everyone for your long and greatly appreciated service to the district. Uh, we appreciate you, and we hope whatever comes next is, uh, rewarding. Okay, we're going to move to 15, Consent Agenda. Uh, okay. May I have a motion and a second to approve items 15A through 15AG as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ponsor-Kamkar, seconded by Ms. Tabit. Uh, all those, oh, any conversation? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Seeing no opposition, motion carries four zero with one absence. Let me just flippity-flip. Okay, we do not have a gift report this evening, so tonight we are going to adjourn at 9:38. We'll see everybody again on June 20th.